Okay, I'll speak straight to the mic. It seems to be set at full volume.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Assistant Sheriff Brandon Corbeil, can you hear me?
I can. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. You know what? Spanish translator Carmen Gomez, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you. Dr. Christina Galli, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Thank you. I'm actually going to make Dr. Christina Galli a panelist for now so I can test the video option.
Okay.
Can you put your video on to see if it's coming up okay? Okay, great. I can see. So I'm going to put you back as an attendee and when it's time for Dr. Galli to present, I'll promote her to a panelist.
Okay.
Thank you. This is another sound check for Mr. Max Hansman. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, it sounds a little better. Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Huntsman?
Yes.
I'm going to make you a panelist, I just made you a panelist. Can you now see if you can turn your video on?
Video seems to be working.
Okay, great, we can see you. I will move you back as an attendee and when it's time for you to present, then I will make you a panelist at that time.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Dr. Barbara Ferrer, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me? Let me turn on the camera.
Yes, please. Okay, great, we can see you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Scorsa, can you hear me? This is a sound check for Dr. Scorsa. Can you hear me? Kathleen Kenny, can you hear me? Kenny?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Can you turn your video on to see if it's working?
Yes.
Okay, great, I can see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Rita Single, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, can you please turn your video on? Perfect, I can see you, thank you. Lastly, Assistant Sheriff Corbeil, can you hear me? I've made you a panelist, can you please see if your video is working properly?
I clicked the button and it should be on.
Okay, great, I can see you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a sound... Sound check. Mic, one, two, three, four, five. Hi, good morning, this is a sound check. Dr. Scorsa, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning, I can hear you.
Thank you, can you please turn your video on for testing?
Yes, I am testing out.
Okay, great. We can see you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. DeMille. Good morning. And welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the L.A. County Board of Supervisors, which is being held remotely, and today is Tuesday, July 12, 2022. We'll take roll call to confirm attendance, beginning with Supervisor Solis, good morning.
Good morning, present.
Supervisor Kuhl.
Good morning, present.
Supervisor Han.
Good morning, present.
And Supervisor Bargher.
Present.
Asia Davenport, Chief Executive Officer.
Present.
Don Harrison, Acton County Council.
Present.
Celia Zavala, Executive Officer.
Here.
Supervisor Han, you'll do us the honor of leading us in the pledge.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, someday.
Thank you very much. As indicated on the posted agenda, we'll be taking telephonic public comment during today's meeting. The executive office of the board received over 2,000 written public comments for today's meeting, and as those written comments were received, all of them were available to the supervisors for their consideration, consistent with the Brown Act requirements. We'll continue to receive written public comment throughout the meeting, which will become part of the official record. Executive Officer, please call the agenda.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Today's agenda will begin on page two, Set Matters. Set Matter One is a report by the Chief Executive Officer and appropriate department heads as necessary on the status of American Rescue Plan funding and consideration of necessary action. Set Matter Two is a discussion and consideration of necessary action on the public health order related to COVID-19 and the status on the COVID-19 vaccine. These items will be held for discussion. On page three, Consent Calendar, Board of Supervisors, Items Three through Twenty-Four. On Item Two... Excuse me, on Item Six, this includes a correction as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Item Eleven, Supervisor Solis requests that this item be held. Also, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Item Twelve, Supervisor Mitchell requests that this item be held. On Item Thirteen, Supervisor Mitch- requests that this item be held. On Item Thirteen, Supervisor Mitchell and Solis like to revise Directive Number One to remove the superintendent of the Los Angeles Unified School District and add impacted school districts, and revise Directive One C to replace L.A. USD Wellness Centers with school-based wellness services. On Items Fourteen and Fifteen, Supervisor Mitchell requests that these items be held. On Item Sixteen, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Items Twenty, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Item Twenty-Two, Supervisor Kuhl requests that this item be held. On Page Twenty-Two, Administrative Matters, Items Twenty-Five through Ninety-Two. On Items Twenty-Five, the Chief Executive Officer requests that this item be continued to January 24, 2023. On Item Thirty, the Chief Executive Officer requests that this item be continued two weeks to July 26, 2022. On Item Forty-Eight, this includes a revision as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Item Fifty-Eight, Supervisor Solis requests that this item be continued to August 2, 2022. On Item Eighty, Supervisor Mitchell requests that this item be held. On Page Sixty-Six, this includes miscellaneous additions to the agenda, which were posted more than seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Page Sixty-Seven, Ordnance for Introductions, Items Ninety-Three through Ninety-Seven. On Page Seventy, Public Hearing. On Item Ninety-Eight, this item is related to Item Ninety-D. The Director of Public Works requests that only the public hearing be continued two weeks to July 26, 2022. On Page Seventy-One, Special District Agendas. This is the agenda for the Los Angeles County Development Authority. On Page Seventy-Eight, this is the agenda for the Regional Park and Open Space District. On Page Seventy-Nine, Notices of Closed Session. Items CS Two, CS Three, and CS Four are additions as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On Item CS Two, the Acton County Council requests that this item be continued one week to July 19, 2022. The requests for continuances through CS Four are before you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moved by Supervisor Han, seconded by Supervisor Kuhl to approve these items. Such will be the order.
On Page Eighty-Two, Items Continued from Previous Meetings for Further Action, Further Discussion and Action by the Board. Item A Ten is a discussion and consideration of necessary actions related to declare outbreaks of infectious disease threatening the public health in the Los Angeles County. Item A Ten, Supervisor Han requests that this item be held. That completes the reading of the agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you, executive officer. We'll now take public comment for all agenda items. Executive Officer, please read the call information that was also provided on the agenda and explain the speaking rules to those members of the public who are calling in to address the board this morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 877-226-8163 and use participant code number 1336503. To repeat, please call 877-226-8163 and use participant code number 1336503. Do not call that number if you only want to listen to the meeting. To listen only, please call 877-873-8017 and follow the instructions. To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state your name and which agenda items you wish to speak on. We will allocate ninety minutes for public comment on all items posted on today's agenda. You will have one minute to speak on one agenda item or two minutes to speak on two or more items. In addition, those who would like to address the board with general public comment will be provided one additional minute for a maximum total up to three minutes per person. We will continue to accept all written comments that come in during the meeting, which will become part of the record. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell if you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one warning from County Council or the chair. If you do not immediately or clearly get on topic, or if you stray off topic again, you will forfeit the rest of your time, and the chair will move to the next speaker. Please note that if you're also listening to the board meeting on a computer or speakerphone, you will need to turn down the volume on those devices as soon as the moderator calls on you. If you do not turn down the volume, there will be an echo. Moderator, may we have the first speaker, please?
Our first participant is Helen Jones. Please state the agenda item you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Um, yes, thank you, Board of Supervisors. I'll be speaking on public comment, Item Twelve, Item Eleven, and Item Twenty-Eight.
You may begin.
Thank you. Um, for decades, Angelenos have witnessed a culture of corruption and impunity in the Sheriff Department, leaving people who are stopped or incarcerated at risk of abuse, of death, or worse. For more than fifty years, deputy gangs among the ranks and managements of the Sheriff Departments have terrorized community members, especially in Black and Brown communities. My name is Helen Jones. I am the mother of John Horton. My son, John, was beat to death March 30th by the 3,000 Boys Deputy Sheriff Gang. And for over a decade, I've been fighting, my family's been fighting, trying to get justice from this Sheriff Department, and hasn't gotten out one piece of justice. And not only John has been, has been killed and abused and beat to death and been slaughtered by this Sheriff Department, so many community members have been under siege by this department. I urge this board to please pass this charter amendment, put this on the ballot, don't let the community suffer no more. We've been suffering for decades, family after family. Do you know we asked each other over at least thirty-five to forty years, who do the Sheriff Department answer to? Who could we tell when the Sheriff Department comes kicking our doors, put drugs on family members that just trying to walk in the yard from coming from somewhere, when they pulling families over, trailing them in their cars, and who could we, who do we go to? We said this for years, and couldn't tell nobody because there was nobody to tell. There was nobody to hold this Sheriff Department accountable. This sheriff today, Allison Weber, he knows just like the regular, the rest of the sheriffs that ran this department, that they could do what they want to do. And they know us as public and community members, grieving family members, grieving mothers and fathers, and the children that left behind by all the lives that they took and that they have stolen brutally, I mean brutally stolen our children's lives. Who do we tell? We, we had nobody to tell. So I urge this board, please, hold this Sheriff Department accountable. Let us see that, let this Sheriff Department see that you can't do the public like this. You just can't coming off and then coming off just to abuse the families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Vicky Beza. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Vicky Beza, and I'm speaking on Item Twelve. I'm a member of Unite Here Local Eleven, and I just, I live in District Two. Um, I'm happy to see that the board is bringing this urgently needed charter amendment, um, to a vote. Uh, you know, we, our union has stood with the Guardado family for the last two years since their San Andres was shot five times in the back and killed by the Sheriff's deputies, and we have not seen the sheriff take any responsibility whatsoever. This measure creates common sense checks and balances, and I urge you to approve it, so I can vote on it in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Frankie Corallo. Please state the agenda items you'll be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning. My name is Frankie Carrillo. I'm a resident of District One, and I would like to speak on Agenda Item Number Twelve, along with general public comments. Once again, good morning, Board of Supervisors, along with everyone in attendance. I rise in full support of Item Number Twelve, the charter amendment that would bring accountability to the Sheriff's Department. I'm honored to stand shoulder to shoulder with the community and lend my voice to such an important decision that you'll be voting on today, Supervisors. Not too long ago, I would not have had the opportunity to be here today because I was in prison, serving a life sentence for a crime I did not commit. I have been fully exonerated, and in the process, I was, it was proven that the L.A. County Sheriff Deputy's abuse or power infringed me for a crime I did not commit when I was merely sixteen years old. The deputies I'm referring to belong to a deputy gang called the Vikings. This tragic L.A. story occurred many years ago, but the problem of corruption and the lack of checks and balances has not been addressed, and the problem sadly for many Angelenos has only gotten worse. As we all know, many have come forward promising that they will fix the problem from within, but once elected, they not only forget the, the promise that they made to us, but they become the problem themselves. Finally, Supervisors, for many victims of the Sheriff's Department, they have courageously denounced the corruption of the department. With every legal avenue possible, literally every legal avenue possible that we can as community, we have tried to expose them. I have personally sued the department for millions of dollars, and I have exposed their terrible practices and procedures, but the problem continues. I have shared what they did to me in a series on slides that the world can see, and the problem continues. But above, but above all, Supervisors, I spent twenty years of my life in prison for a crime I did not commit, and that was at the, the core of it, it was because there was a lack of check and balances within the department. So I plead to you today, Supervisors, to allow the tragic story of my suffering for all those years to motivate you to support Item Number Twelve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Eric Previn. Please state the agenda items you'll be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
I have been fully exonerated, and in the process, I was, it was proven that the L.A. County Sheriff Deputy's abuse or power infringed me for a crime I did not commit when I was merely sixteen years old.
Mr. Previn?
The deputy I'm referring to belongs to a deputy gang called the Vikings. This tragic L.A. story occurred many years ago.
Mr. Previn, your line is open.
The problem of corruption and the lack of checks and balances has not been addressed, and the problem sadly for many Angelenos has only gotten worse.
Thank you. May we have the next speaker, please?
As we all know, many have come forward.
Yes, our next speaker is Alberto Retena. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, uh, I'm president and CEO. I'm speaking on Item Twelve, President and CEO of Community Coalition. I'm a resident of District Two, and I, I'm calling in to strongly support Item Twelve. Uh, we are community members that have been relegated to a oppressive state of affairs in our county. What do we do as a public when an elected official refuses to abide by the rules, when they abuse their power and have a body of armed people to protect them? Certainly, as everyday residents of L.A. County, we have two options which are costly and ineffective and take time. We can't afford to wait to recall, and we can't afford to wait till the next election. Everyday people don't have the time to run a recall or wait four years or two years or one year. Uh, we need to tend to our families, go to work, care for our children, care for our communities. Everyday people should not have to fear deputy gangs, cover-ups, and waste hard-earned, tax-earned money on someone who refuses to be accountable to the voter. As a county, we rejected Trump from the White House, but yet we allow a Trump-like leader in the sheriff's office.
Your time has expired. May we have the next speaker, please?
Yes, our next speaker is Luciana Sividler. You, please state the agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
I'm going to be addressing Agenda Item Number Eleven. My name is Luciana Sividler, and I'm a senior policy attorney at Children's Law Center of California. CLC represents approximately 30,000 children under the jurisdiction of the dependency court in Los Angeles County. We thank Supervisors Solis and Mitchell for this important and necessary motion. The law is very clear that like all youth in California, youth in foster care, including non-minor dependents, have a right to access and receive reproductive and sexual health care. This includes the right to access and receive abortion care, should that be their decision. However, historically, youth in foster care face disproportionately poor reproductive and sexual health outcomes and experiences as compared to their peers, with reported challenges in accessing sexual health education and care. In fact, CLC has been part of a multi-year effort, the Reproductive Health Equity Project, which specifically aims to dismantle systemic barriers to sexual reproductive health, education, and services. As this motion rightly points out, the reasons to, yes.
Excuse me, your time has expired. May we have the next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Kurt Peterson. Please state the agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Uh, hello, twelve fifty-two in public comment. Um, good morning, Supervisors. My name is Kurt Peterson. I am a co-president of Unite Here Local Eleven. We represent more than 30,000 cooks, servers, dishwashers, and room attendants who are the backbone of our tourism industry. On the evening of June 18, 2020, a Los Angeles sheriff's deputy took the life of Andres Guardado. Andres' dad, Cristobal Guardado, is a Local Eleven member. He works as a professional cook at the L.A. Downtown Hotel. Andres was working as a security guard when this deputy killed him. The irony is infuriating. You see, Andres was protecting and ensuring the safety of others when a deputy, whose job was to keep the peace, shot Andres five times in the back. We commend the board for voting twice in June and September of 2020 to call for an independent investigation of Andres' killing. However, in the two years since that tragic day, it is clear to us that the existing mechanisms of accountability and transparency are horribly deficient. This measure creates a necessary check and balance. Unite Here Local Eleven urges the Supervisors to refer to the voters for the November 8, 2022 election, a charter amendment that will allow the board to remove the sheriff for serious violations of public trust. And then, on Item Fifty-Two, we would request that the board defer the decision on the lease extension for the California Yacht Club. This, the Cube Smart, which is requesting the lease, has no experience managing any operations that currently exist at that site. We need stable, qualified operators in our marina. Please defer that decision today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May we have the next speaker, please?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adriana Wong. Please state the agenda items you'll be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning. I'm calling in support of Agenda Items Twelve and Sixteen and to give general public comment.
You may begin.
I'd like to express, thank you. I would like to express strong support for Item Number Twelve. L.A. County should not be run as a police state, but our governance structures make us vulnerable to becoming one, as our current sheriff has made painfully clear through his repeated overreaches of power and defiance of the law. So the checks and balances and the proposed charter amendment are just common sense. It's obvious that a functioning democracy cannot allow for any public official, let alone an official commanding the armed forces and powers that the sheriff does, to have unchecked power to inflict harm on the people of this county. I'd also like to express support for Item Sixteen, the poverty alleviation motion, especially the part of the strategic framework that calls on the county to evaluate and eliminate sources of debt burdening low-income families that are generated by the county's own policies, fines, and fees, such as the phone fees and commissary price gouging by the Sheriff's Department, uh, that it uses to exploit and impoverish people in L.A. County jails and their entire families. It's senseless and wrong for the county to give with one hand while authorizing the sheriff to take more with the other, and as the motion says, the cost of inaction in maintaining the status quo are too significant to the health and well-being of our residents. So I urge the county to prioritize that part of the framework. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Sam Lewis. Please state the agenda item you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Sam Lewis. I'm the executive director of ARC, the Anti-Racism Coalition. I'm a resident of District Number Five. I will be speaking on Agenda Item Twelve and general public comment. Uh, we strongly support Item Twelve, the board's motion to bring about a charter amendment for common sense checks and balances. for common sense checks and balances and accountability of this sheriff and all sheriffs to follow. Deputy gangs and other forms of deputy violence have persisted because one sheriff's administrator after the next has failed to exactly enforce policies that provide meaningful and consistent discipline when deputies harass, abuse, and murder. This culture of violence comes from the very top and is left unchecked by our dated charter, our county's constitut, Constitution, and constitutions are meant to be living documents. Checks and balances are pillars of a strong and functioning democracy aimed at allowing one person or agency, at not allowing one person or agency to become too powerful, and in American system of government, no government official should have the unchecked power that is claimed by this sheriff. Establishing checks and balances on the sheriff has, is long overdue, and changes to our county charter can't ensure essential oversight of, of our sheriff. Keep in mind that we have a previous sheriff, uh, incarcerated that behavior was similar to, if not just as, but I don't know if this sheriff's behavior is even worse. This Charter Amendment for Sheriff Accountability allows for the Board to remove the sheriff who is violating law and endangering our lives without the time and expense of a, a recall election, or waiting until the next election. The Board should have the power to protect all of us. We urge the Board to refer to vote, to refer this amendment to, to voters in November Twenty Twenty Two general election, an amendment to our county charter that will create common sense checks and balances and accountability for the sheriff. Let the people speak, please put this on the ballot, let us determine if this is what we want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Genevieve Clavro. Please state the agenda items you'll be addressing today and whether you'll address on General Public Comments. You may begin.
Yes, good morning, this is Dr. Genevieve Clavro, and I am afraid that we are still on a, you know, on the phone instead of in person. Anyway, I will be speaking to One, Two, Twenty Three, and Twelve. On Item Two, I am very concerned of what I see in a newspaper, I see Dr. Ferrer trying to tell us to go, to have to go back to mask, and when I checked with the hospitals and so on, actually, we have had very little, um, admission and the admission, the patients have not been severely sick, so please stop the fear mongering. All it's going to do is going to make people upset and not pulling the rule. And I think also journalists know not to put that in a title, and then, you know, article itself are more realistic. On Item Twelve, I think if you are going to do for the sheriff, if you could do for all the other people who are elected, that's, that's, you know, all of that, you know, just not, just for the sheriff. And on Item Twenty Three, um, same, you know, we are, you go to, have to reopen Sunday, and next week will be the best time. Please reopen, stop that, you know, that excuse. Most other group have reopened. The Board of Pharmacies reopened, the Medical Board, the Nursing Board, many cities from the county have reopened, it is the time to do it also. And on the Rosa, uh, thing, I think I'm glad to see that Doc, that Mitchell have had it because they should be looked at and not receiving father, as we do all the time. On Item Forty-Six, on the sexuality transmitted disease, we need to do something. Los Angeles has the highest level of congenital sickness in the U.S.
Excuse me, your time has expired. May we have the next speaker, please?
The next speaker is Stephanie Luna. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on General Public Comments. You may begin.
Good morning, my name is Stephanie Luna, I'm a resident of District One. I'll be speaking in support of Agenda Items Eleven, Twelve, and General Public Comments. I'd like to thank Supervisors Solis and Mitchell for recommending this item to the Board this morning. I'm here today speaking on behalf of my nephew Anthony Daniel Vargas, whose life was taken by two Los Angeles County Sheriff Deputies in August of Twenty Eighteen. This Board has heard from families and community members speaking on the constant family harassment, the importance of the implementation of Body Cam, the need for a family assistance program, among so many other issues involving the Sheriff's Department. These conversations have all taken place within a three-year span. We're at a crucial point once again, and it's time to take action. As of right now, there are limitations on how to have a sheriff removed. Waiting four years for the next election, which I might add is extremely dangerous, seeing as how much damage the current sheriff has managed to do within his term, and a recall, which is a waste of resources and time, doesn't deal with the systematic nature of the problem that just put the Band-Aid on it. This amendment to the county charter is not a political attack on any one sheriff. It's a push for the Board to have more power when it comes to the department as a whole. It is a push for the Board to have the ability to step in when any sheriff in charge obstructs justice and enables a culture of violence within the department that ultimately endangers our communities. This is a push for the Board, which is responsible for the health and safety of the public, including the supervision of the sheriff to do just that, protect the public. Sheriffs rely on their untouched power, and a sheriff that chooses to abuse it has great potential to do significant harm. We know there are deputy gangs, much like the one my nephew's life was taken for, and we've seen the increase in deputy shootings as well as record-level deaths within the jails. Having policies put into place does nothing when there's a sheriff in charge who will not abide by them and enables every deputy under his watch to do the same. We're not asking for anything radical, we're not asking for anything crazy, we're asking that a sheriff, any sheriff that commits any type of misconduct and obstruction be held to the same standards that we would. This charter amendment is one important step forward and has ultimately been a family and community-led effort. It's apparent that the issues we're facing go deeper than just one sheriff, it's time to take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Roy Humphries. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on General Public Comments. You may begin.
Uh, this is Roy Humphries, addressing the Item Five-Sixteen and General Public Comments. Uh, the Supervisors have nothing better to do than have, uh, breastfeeding month while the beaches of Venice, uh, are being invaded by transients, and those beaches belong to everybody, uh, and from last night's news, and I'm, uh, being shot by transient squatters in the storm drains of Roland Heights. You Supervisors are the best. Item Sixteen, alleviating poverty in Los Angeles County, well, is a pathetic joke. While your sanctuary status brings hundred thousands across our southern border for a life of prostitution, or die as the fifty-nine in the, uh, container vessel whose blood is on your hands. General comment, author legislation to prohibit the, uh, production, sale, and consumption of tobacco products with filters on them as they are a worldwide pollution problem, as noted in multiple, uh, commercials on our, our TV and other sources. And last but not least, I implore you to remove that pathetic timing device you have on the screen, which has no, never has been operated properly and has no relevance to these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Denise Kitner. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on General Public Comments. You may begin.
Hi, good morning, I'll be speaking on Set Matter Two, the Public Health Ordinance. Um, good morning, Supervisors, um, my name is Denise Mitner, I am with the Los Angeles County Business Federation, also known as BizFed. We're an alliance of over two hundred and twenty business organizations, and they represent over four hundred and fifty thousand employers in the county. We're here to comment on the mask mandate. Uh, we absolutely share the Department of Public Health's concern with the rise of, rising COVID cases, and we support increased education and voluntary measures for the region, but we do have concerns with reinstating another mandate that requires our businesses with limited staff to place employees in risky situations, and it has the potential to put certain businesses at a competitive disadvantage to surrounding counties. We understand precautions are necessary, but we believe it's time for the county to reassess how it handles these spikes in COVID cases, instead of placing our businesses at the center of enforcement, which they're neither, uh, qualified to do, um, and it can put them and their employees at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Eric Blood. Please state the agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on General Public Comments. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Eric Blood, I will be speaking on, uh, Twelve and General Comments. I'm a resident here of District One and a member of Unite Here Local Eleven. I am, um, I'm calling in to, uh, support, um, Amendment Number Twelve. Uh, it is urgently needed, a Charter Amendment to vote. Um, our union has stood with the Guardado family for the last few years since their son Andres was shot five times in the back and killed by the Sheriff's Deputy, and we have not seen the sheriff take any responsibility whatsoever. This measure creates common checks and bal, common sense checks and balances, and I urge you to approve it so we can vote on it this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Ramona Partida. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on General Public Comments. You may begin.
Oh, hi. Um, my name is Ramona Partida, I speak Spanish, please. Just later.
You may, you may begin, we will have someone translate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, my name is Ramona Partida. Okay, mi nombre es Ramona Partida, yo soy miembro de, de United Local Once. Estoy contento. Ay. Hello, hola?
Sigue, señora, en español?
Sí, siga la señora, yo lo voy a traducir. Oh, okay. Disculpe, mi nombre es Ramona Partida, yo soy miembro de United Local Once, la Unión de Trabajadores. Estoy contento de ver, de ver a ustedes tomar un voto para crear controles sobre el alguacil. Nuestro sindicato ha apoyado a la familia Guardado durante los últimos dos años, desde que los diputados tiraron, tiraron cinco disparos en la espalda de su hijo Andres, y todavía no, no hemos visto al alguacil asumir ninguna responsabilidad. Esta, esta medida crea controles de, de sentido común, ya urge que lo, que lo aprueben para que nosotros podamos hacer lo mismo en noviembre. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Ramona Partida from United Local Eleven. Um, I am very happy that this measure will take place. Uh, we are here to support the, um, family from Andres who was shot five times. This measure is important because this will hold the Sheriff's Department accountable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moderator, may we have the next speaker, please?
Thank you, our next speaker is Jose Ramirez. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on General Public Comments. You may begin.
Hello, your line is open, please begin.
Yeah, hi, hi, everybody. Um, my name is Jose, I'll be addressing Item Forty-Six, Sexually Transmitted Diseases, and also General Public Comments. Um, I am in full support of Agenda Item Number Forty-Six. I actually started a nonprofit thirteen years ago, uh, with a gay men's nonprofit to prevent HIV, and even though we've done amazing work with HIV, um, we are doing really awful in STIs in the epidemic. I mean, I keep seeing the syphilis have increased by fifty percent from two sixteen to Twenty Twenty. Gonorrhea has eighty thousand cases in California, um, so I really, really recommend for continuing, you know, education, uh, for our L.A. County queer community. Lastly, monkeypox in L.A. County, with a hundred and forty-six cases, sixty in L.A., impacting mostly the MSM, men who have sex with men. I really ask for more education, more vaccination, and react to monkeypox before it becomes a huge epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have the next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Adriana Quin, Quinon, Nunes. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on General Public Comments. You may begin.
Uh, good morning, my name is Adriana Quinones. I'm a resident of La Cienega Heights, uh, represented by Supervisor Solis. Today, I will be speaking about Agenda Item Number Twelve and also General Comments. Um, I'm not supporting this agenda item simply because under Supervisor Han, um, we work very closely with law enforcement. We have made a lot of progress. Uh, we continue to work very closely with law enforcement. I lived in Boyle Heights in Highland Park, there was, there, there is an issue, uh, we need, uh, police reform, but we do not to make this political, which has become political. Um, I, I am, uh, I'm very, very, um, unhappy with this particular agenda item because there is room when you consider involving our community. Um, the community, um, the Supervisor's Office, and also the sheriff, that can be done. It has not been tried, uh, and sadly, there is no, uh, current, um, plan to do it, but it needs to be done. Um, our communities are suffering. La Puente has a gang problem, we have shootings all the time, the same thing with Boyle Heights. So it's not a, totally a sheriff's issue, it's an overall issue that needs to be addressed by the different elected officials, so they need to step up. Uh, we are tired of gangs terrorizing our communities, so I hope all the other speakers have the same passion to address this issue once and for all. Um, you know, we also need to make sure there's checks and balances, but not this way, uh, we don't want corruption, uh, with our county supervisors. We have already seen it recently with one of the supervisors that's no longer on the Board, so I'm very concerned about that. Uh, now with to the, uh, general agenda item, uh, next time we have the census, let's take our time and not just put the next supervisor in place.
Excuse me? Your time has expired. May we have the next speaker, please?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Previn. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on General Public Comments. You may begin.
Okay, thank you, yes, I will address on General Public Comment, and I'm also going to address, uh, a number of items, uh, today. So, um, so, but first of all, I just want to point out, I think it was Pete Booty Judge, who is the U.S. Secretary of Transportation, and I really, I think he kind of nailed it the other day. He said, uh, people should expect two things. One is, any public figure, that includes all of you, should always be free from violence, intimidation, and harassment. But you should never be free from criticism or peaceful protest, or people exercising their First Amendment rights. Now, he was not speaking to you, uh, he was talking to America, he wasn't speaking to Nori Martinez, who has erected a five-hundred-foot wall of bad idea around her home because she's worried, like that guy Brett Kavanaugh, who's worried about people coming nearby. But I'm really disappointed in you, um, and especially, you know, Gianna Tan, who I, I like among the, I like many of you, but I want you to reconsider this idea of taking out another elected office. Uh, whether Villanueva is a animal, or an idiot, or a cop, or whatever you want to call him, it's not appropriate to defang the idea of voter support. If, if the voters don't want him, they'll throw him directly out of office in November, and if they think he's on to something by standing up to you, they'll reinstate him. That's the, our process. This is really an erosion of what we expect from you. You know, I mean, there's a recall, right? Recalls, uh, are a process, if you want to go through it, you know, there's a terribly pro-racististic recall underway now to get the DA out, but you're testing the public's patience, okay? It's not cool. And I'm really hurt because here are the five women clutching arms, dressed in red, and, and yet you've cut the public meetings down to virtually nothing, the job order contract, in which you guys have been, you know, you saw what happened in Long Beach and all the fraud, and then you quickly chopped it up and made it silent, and you just... And you just keep moving forward. The same story with, you know, the Rosis Agreement and Max Huntsman. Max Huntsman was a guy who could not find anything wrong at all until your enemy showed up, and then he is 24/7 grovelling around, debasing the entire county. Why aren't all county officials subject to whatever you'd like to do? Have a voter initiative to see whether or not we can just remove him if the other group doesn't like him? It's absurd. It's absurd on its face. I'm not, you know, declaring who I support in the sheriff election because the county will decide among all the people who are impacted at different levels and face different kinds of situations. I'm relatively lucky, you know, in terms of terrible crime and county enforcement. But this body needs to do what it should have done a long time ago.
Excuse me?
Start meeting records in front of them.
Your time has expired.
The voters and the people. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have the next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Richard Denning. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please begin.
Great. I'm going to be speaking on Agenda Item 23, 12, and public comments, so for three minutes. I have my timer up as well, so I'll keep track of my own time. I want to address item number 23. I'm sitting here watching the screen right now, and half of you guys aren't in on the screen, or you've silenced the screen. Hillary Solis is looking at papers. Holly Mitchell is looking at papers. Janet Han is looking at newspapers earlier. You guys don't care what the public has to say. That is why we need to open back up the public forum, because then we're standing in front of you and we're asking you to look at us as we're talking. It commands respect. It actually demands respect, that it will show you guys that are interested in what we're saying instead of looking at your own agenda and what you want to do with your day, or read your newspapers, or look at your phones. This is ridiculous. This needs to stop, so Holly Mitchell, you need to open back up the public forum and stop with all the charades dealing with COVID. Item Number 12, you guys are positioning yourselves to try and have authority. You want somebody like McDonald had when he was in office, where he's a puppet to the Board of Supervisors and do whatever they want to do. Villanueva is standing up against you guys. That's what you don't like. You should include yourselves in that agenda item and say that, yeah, you can be removed as well, because the misappropriation of funds, you guys control the budget, you guys control where all the money goes. There needs to be misappropriation of funds brought up against all of you guys, and as well as what you guys have done with the COVID, the county COVID policy, and how you've locked everybody down and you've threatened to fire over 18,000 employees due to their unwillingness to accept an experimental medical treatment. I find it interesting now that the cameras are back on. Julie, you're still at home. It's so interesting, it's interesting that you've decided not to run this last election, and you've decided to retire because you're under investigation, just like Mark Ridley Thomas is. So you guys need to be put on notice. Let's put you guys on the agenda item. Let's get you guys removed from office. This needs to stop now. The charade that you guys have done, the, the checks and balances title is misleading on its face. It's not about checks and balances. It's about, we don't like what this man stands for, so we're going to go ahead and remove him. The fact that all these other callers are calling in about this one incident, that it's still, that probably has a lot more going into the story than just, oh, he was shot five times in the back, that's, that's a script these people are reading from their local Union 11. So yes, now, I appreciate you guys all paying attention now as you're looking at the cameras and your, your, your screens are on, because this is what this is about. We have a pub, we have a right, a constitutional right, to address our grievances to our elected officials, and that's what we're doing here, and you guys need to start paying attention.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Michelle King. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning. I'm a District One resident, speaking on Items 11, 12, 28, and general public comment, please. I support Item 11. I strongly oppose Item 28, stop funding a sheriff's department ripe with corruption and misconduct. I support Item 12. Angelenos have witnessed this culture of corruption and impunity in the sheriff's department for decades. In July of 2020, the board voted unanimously to increase transparency and accountability of LASD, removed LASD patrol from county parks in October of 2020, and voted unanimously to protect surviving families from retaliation harassment by the sheriff's department in May of 2021. This board is well aware of the toxicity and danger that LASD poses to our communities. This did not start with Sheriff Villanueva, and we cannot expect it to end with Villanueva when we vote him out of office in November, as evidenced by his challenger, who has his own history of scandal, including racism, misconduct, and using a self-deleting texting app to avoid California laws. A culture of corruption and impunity in the sheriff's department. Checks and balances are pillars of a strong and functioning democracy. No government official should have the unchecked power that is claimed by the sheriff. Recalls are a waste of time and money. We need real accountability in between elections. We need a charter that works for Angelenos today and tomorrow, that gives us the tools necessary when a sheriff violates the law and public trust. I urge the board to refer to voters for the November election, an amendment to our county charter that will create common sense checks and balances and accountability of the sheriff. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. May we have the next speaker, please?
As a reminder to address the board, if you have not already done so, please press 1 then 0 at this time. Do not press 1 and 0 a second time, or you will be removed from the queue. Our next participant is Arissa.
We will now hear the Spanish interpretation of this reminder.
Como recordatorio para dirigirse a la supervisora, si aún no lo ha hecho, presione uno y luego el cero en este momento. No presione uno y cero por segunda vez porque será eliminado de la línea.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Arissa Palmer. Please state the agenda item you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Arissa Palmer. I'm the Executive Director for Breastfeed LA, and I will be speaking on Item 5 and general public comment. Thank you Supervisor Han for proclaiming this August as National Breastfeeding Month and creating more support for those who choose to breastfeed. Thank you for recognizing the benefits and reduction of risk for both infants and parents who choose to breast or chest feed. We respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors designate a countywide breastfeeding coordinator, invest equally in lactation support and resources as it does formula distribution, and improve policies and increase services that support lactation in communities of color in an effort to advance breastfeeding as part of good nutrition, health protection, food security, and poverty reduction. In response to written comment, I would like to add that we use the term breastfeeding and chest feeding interchangeably to describe the action of feeding an infant human milk. The term chest feeding is intentionally offered as an alternate term for lactating persons that prefer not to use the term breast when referring to their own bodies. This linguistic shift is part of our overt commitment to our organizational values of diversity and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Vicki Branuck. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, Honorable Members of the Board. I'm speaking on behalf of Item 15. My name is Vicki Branuck, and I'm the Director of Workforce Strategy and Innovation for BioCom California Institute. I'm also proud to say that I'm a California native who grew up in Los Angeles County. BioCom California Institute's mission is to develop and promote a skilled and diverse pipeline of talent to accelerate the growth of California's life science ecosystem. This motion will further provide underrepresented students with the opportunity to acquire the skills necessary to pursue a meaningful, fulfilling, and family-sustaining career in the rapidly growing life science industry in Los Angeles. This motion's call for a life science cradle-to-career employment pipeline will open doors to STEM-focused learning, training, and professional opportunities that too few have been exposed to. Thank you to Board Chair Mitchell and the entire board for considering this forward-thinking motion to accelerate, to accelerate the life science sector in Los Angeles. BioCom California Institute looks forward to working with other Los Angeles stakeholders to inspire, prepare, and diversify the region's life science workforce. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Lauren West. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
I would like to speak on Item 7. Good morning, Chair Mitchell and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Lorene West, and I am the Mayor of the city of Santa Cruda. On behalf of the city, I wanted to express our strong support for Item 7, to begin negotiations between the county and the city for the proposed transfer of Hart Park. The city is proud of the work and resources we have invested in our Old Town New Hall Arts and Entertainment District, which is where Hart Park is located. City events held in New Hall, like our annual Cowboy Festival, which has been held at Hart Park in the past, highlighting Native American, Western, and Mexican-American heritage in the area, would be able to greatly expand with the transfer of Hart Park. This transfer would further the city's vision in enriching the arts district and preserves the history of Los Angeles County and the Santa Cruda Valley for generations to come. The city has proudly supported a number of projects designed to maintain the integrity of multiple historical structures at Heritage Junction at Hart Park. I'd like to thank Supervisor Berger for this motion and urge this board to pass this motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Rosa Padilla. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning. I am Rosa Padilla, mother of Isaias Cervantes, and I will be speaking of Item 12 of the agenda, public comments. And on March 31, 2021, LAPD was contacted to help Isaias with mental health problems. When sheriff got here, they did not treat him like a person who suffers from mental health. Instead, they shot him in his back, damaging his lungs, leaving him paralyzed and hurt. The sheriff of LAPD has said he is not autistic nor paralyzed. These are lies, and the sheriff is not in conditions to leave the county. I support to put my vote in November to make the sheriff responsible for what they did to Isaias and others. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Cindy Young. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Cindy Young, and I am a resident of District 4. I'm commenting on Item Number 5 and general public comment. I want to thank Supervisor Han for prioritizing breastfeeding for our most vulnerable communities. Los Angeles County families deserve equitable education about infant feeding and continuous quality lactation support. We respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors designate a countywide breastfeeding coordinator, invest equally in lactation support and resources as it does formula distribution, and improve policies and increase services that support lactation in communities of color in an effort to advance breast chest feeding as part of good nutrition, health protection, food security, and poverty reduction. I'm also in support of using the term chest feeding to ensure inclusivity of all families here in Los Angeles County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Chiquita Twiman. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Chiquita Twiman. I am a LA County resident of District 3, and I am also a member of SEIU Local 2015, the largest union in the country, the second largest in the state of California. We strongly support Item 12, the board motion to bring about a charter amendment for common sense checks and balances and accountability and transparency of the, of the sheriff. For more than 50 years, deputy gangs among the ranks and management of the sheriff's department have terrorized community members, especially black, brown, black and brown communities. Deputy gangs and other forms of deputy violence have persisted because of one sheriff administration after the next has failed to enact and enforce policies that provide meaningful and consistent discipline when deputies harass, abuse, and kill. Again, my name is Chiquita Twiman. I am the sister of Ryan Twiman, who was killed in Compton, California in June of 2019, who was shot over 34 times while sitting in his car.
Excuse me?
A young black man.
Your time has expired. May we have the next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Anthony Arness. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Anthony Arness, and I'm a resident of District 3, and I wanted to speak on Agenda Items 11, 12, and general public comment. For Agenda Item 11, I'm in favor. I urge the board to pass this motion as part of its effort to safeguard reproductive rights, bodily autonomy, and the right to abortion. The overturn of Roe v. Wade and subsequent shifts in the legal landscape of abortion have created mass confusion about where abortion is legal and where it is not. This confusion is exacerbated for undocumented people who face extra risks in seeking medical care and an added fear of retribution and deportation, and for youth in foster care who are already vulnerable and lack resources. This motion will work to counter misinformation and confusion by ensuring that the county has clear and accessible messaging regarding the legality of abortion and what resources are available to someone seeking an abortion. And for Agenda Item 12, I'm in favor, and to reiterate what others have said, deputy gangs and other forms of deputy violence have persisted because one sheriff's administration after the next has failed to enact and enforce policies that provide meaningful and consistent discipline when deputies harass, abuse, and kill. This culture of violence has come from the very top and is left unchecked by our dated charter. We need a charter that works for the people of Los Angeles County today and tomorrow, and that gives us the tools necessary for when a sheriff violates the law and the public trust. We need checks and balances, which are pillars of a functioning democracy aimed at not allowing one person or agency to become too powerful. Creating checks and balances on the sheriff has been long overdue, and changes to our county charter can ensure essential oversight of the sheriff. And for general comment, I just wanted to add something to Agenda Item 28. I wanted to urge the board to reject all funding towards the sheriff's department, including the federal DHS funds in this motion. The county department receiving the largest chunk of money from this grant is the sheriff's department, who will be receiving $1.7 million to increase their already bloated $4 billion budget. This $1.7 million will be used to fund mass surveillance, breaches of privacy, and further violence against LA communities under a false guise of anti-terrorism. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Lucy Ibarra. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning, Chair Mitchell and Honorable Supervisors. My name is Lucy Ibarra, Vice President of Planning, Land use, and Government Affairs for Caruso. I'll be speaking specifically on Item 14, aligning Marina Del Rey with Los Angeles County priorities for equity and inclusion. We are longtime stakeholders and leaseholders in Marina Del Rey, including properties in and adjacent to Basin S. Caruso also operates Waterside in Marina Del Rey, where back in 2005, we reimagined, redeveloped, and transformed what had been a deteriorating shopping area on county-owned property into a thriving center and community anchor. As Marina stakeholders, we agree that a strategic and inclusive process over the upcoming months to envision the future is vital, that includes meaningful engagement with diverse stakeholders in Marina Del Rey and throughout the county. We also agree that this process should reflect the county's priorities of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Any comprehensive planning process involving publicly owned land should be conducted with the urgency that comes with elevating opportunities to improve access.
Your time has expired. May we have the next speaker, please?
The next speaker is Marcella Rosen. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Marcella Rosen. I am a resident of District 2, and I would like to speak on Agenda Items 11, 12, and public, general public comment.
You may begin.
So the first agenda item, oh, the first agenda item I want to talk about is 11. I believe the county needs to create a communication strategy for out-of-state people seeking abortions in Los Angeles. The current legality of abortions is intentionally difficult to navigate, particularly with certain states seeking to criminalize out-of-state travel for abortion or punish those who assist someone in getting an abortion. LA County, as an ardent supporter of the state, is a strong and resilient community L A County, as an ardent supporter of reproductive rights, has a responsibility to inform out-of-state patients of the actual risks of seeking an abortion in L A and what they can or cannot face legal consequences for. This county should create an accessible communication strategy that clearly explains out-of-state people's options, risks, and available county resources. I also want to express my strong in favor of Agenda Item twelve. This agenda item is so important to me, and I believe so important to all of Los Angeles. I strongly urge the board to pass this motion and propose to the voters a county charter amendment that will create common sense checks and balances and accountability of the sheriff. For far too long, L A S D sheriffs, including Sheriff Villanova, have gotten away with rampant abuses of power and terrorizing marginal communities with little more than a slap on the wrist. On this call alone, we have heard about people being killed, framed, and harassed with no legal path to accountability. No matter what office, function, or role, our public officials take an oath to support and protect and respect our rights, not inflict harm, and represent the public and common good. But in Los Angeles County, when a sheriff breaches this oath and abuses their power, our tools for real and meaningful accountability are nonexistent. The time is now for the board to take decisive action to curtail the sheriff's unchecked power by allowing the people to vote on this amendment. And for general comment, I just want to add to Agenda Item twenty-eight, the funding, the increased Homeland Security grant funds. So I don't think I need to remind you, but across the country, the police have failed to prevent people from being killed, despite the U S police forces being the most heavily armed and funded in the world, despite unprecedented levels of police funding and militarization in the U S. This grant funding will only be used to strengthen L A S D repression and violence against marginalized community, it will, communities, it will enhance L A S D's capacity for surveillance against innocent people that are already being targeted, the families of victims of deputy violence and deputy gangs, people who speak out against L A S D abuses in overpoliced communities that live under the reign of L A S D repression. I yield my time, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Hillary Norton. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comments. You may begin.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes, your line is open. Please begin.
How do I?
Please begin.
Okay, excellent. This is Michael Wolcox. I'm Hillary Norton, intern. Good morning, honorable board members. My name is Michael Wolcox, and I am calling on behalf of Brian Barnum, CEO at Armada Pharmaceuticals, speak on item fifteen and general public comment. How do I stop the echo?
If you have a second device on it, you will get an echo.
I do not have any devices.
Your, please continue. Your time is on.
Okay. Armada is a clinical-stage biotechnology company focusing on treating antibiotic resistance and difficult-to-treat bacterial infections. Armada's facility is in Marina Del Rey in L A Second Supervisor Old District, and they're in the process of expanding their footprint as they grow. One of the best things about the growth of the company that will make Barnum most excited about in conjunction with motion fifteen is the makeup of Armada's workforce. Seventy percent of the manufacturing staff comes from the county system and L A trade sector, and they are looking forward to this motion assisting Armada with outreach to underserved communities for future employment at Armada. If Armada could assist in tenant improvement at their new site, Armada could hire up to fifty new employees. Armada is putting proof that the life science industry isn't just for kids. It's a growing, diverse sector that creates career opportunities for all Angelenos. But more is needed, as all voters must come together to create new pathways for underrepresented communities. And that is what Chair Mitchell's motion speaks to, creating opportunities for all Angelenos, especially those in underemployed communities, so that life science industry can not only forge the creativity and innovation of young minds, but so that Armada's workforce can mirror the diversity of the communities in which they work.
Your time has expired. May we have the next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Gabriela Rojas. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comments. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Gabriela Rojas, and I live in Supervisor Solis's District One. I'm calling to support Agenda Item twelve, the Board of Supervisors' motion to bring about a charter amendment for common sense checks and balances and accountability for the sheriff. Our public servants take an oath to support and defend the Constitution, represent the common good, and keep the public trust. But in L A County, the sheriff's office has broached that oath and abused its power for too long. Until now, there has been no meaningful way to create accountability for those abuses, and we have a priceless opportunity and far past time that we change our county charter so that we have the tools necessary to create meaningful oversight of the sheriff and protect our communities. I stand with the countless people and communities of L A County who have suffered at the hands of the sheriff and urge the Board of Supervisors to refer to voters for the November twenty-two election, an amendment to our county charter that will create common sense checks and balances and accountability for the sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Engon Robinson. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comments. You may begin.
Hello, I'm speaking on general public comments and on item numbers forty-five and forty-six. I am calling on behalf of the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. I'd just like to say that community partners like A H S are well-prepared to reach communities most impacted by monkeypox. Currently, as M S M are largely affected because of existing sexual networks, A H S and other organizations directly working with this community are well-positioned to disseminate information and vaccinations when they become available. We urge L A County to collaborate with the organizations currently dealing with this epidemic on the front lines in order to allow for more streamlined communication with the providers and community members who need it most. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Julie Martinez. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comments. You may begin.
Good mor, good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to address the board. I will be speaking on items eleven, twelve, twenty-eight, and public comment. The bulk of my attention will go to, to item number twelve. I am a resident of District Five, and for far too long, L A County has been defined by corruption at the highest level within the L A County Sheriff's Department. I'd like to stress that this is not a political issue, as most of the voters and comments on here voted actually for the current sheriff. We are in a critical point where we are witnessing a sheriff that is unstable and out of control. We need checks and balances for the people of Los Angeles County. I am supporting the Board of Supervisors' motion, item twelve, in order to bring about a charter amendment for basic common sense checks and balances and basic accountability on the sheriff. I'd like to highlight some issues. A previous caller mentioned that there's a gang problem. There is a serious gang problem within the L A County Sheriff's Deputy, Deputy, so serious that has garnered national attention, and there have been several investigations opened by our California Attorney General and the F B I. The civilian oversight has recently held several hearings on deputy gangs. It turns out Sheriff Bianueva held very, very public conferences and claimed that he had cleaned up the L A County Sheriff's Department's gang problem. His command staff reported in the C O C's recent hearings at Loyola-Lockville that no, indeed, he had lied, that he had not fired or removed any of the Bandido gang members. Sheriff Bianueva has lied. His command staff revealed his lies. This is a very dangerous trend. There also exists a very dangerous trend, a Sheriff Bianueva Town Hall. We have noticed that his supporters have become increasingly violent. They come from the ultrai and white supremacist groups. Many of them have publicly spoken about their support for the January sixth insurrection. It's a very dangerous precedent when the Sheriff Bianueva supporters are advocating for the overthrow of the L A County Board of Supervisors. I come from a very different background. My family is impacted by sheriff violence. My grandson was murdered in June twenty-seventh of two thousand nineteen by a prospect of the Bandidos in East L A at a routine traffic stop. We, the families, have been harassed when we have spoken up. It is time now for the Board of Supervisors to allow the voters to vote on a charter amendment this November eighth. It's extremely important that we rein in the criminal activity of the Sheriff's Department, whether it's this sheriff or sheriff before, or let's not forget, the past sheriff and other sheriff are serving time in federal prison at this time.
Your time has expired.
Yes.
May we have the next speaker, please?
The next speaker is Lydia Scott. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comments. You may begin.
My name is Lydia Scott, and I will be making general comment. It is regarding the online registration system, ActiveNet, for D P R programs. It continues to be a barrier for a specific group of participants, creating an inequitable procedure. Persons with the use of only one arm or hand cannot complete, compete for the limited number of spaces, as it is a first registered, first admitted system. The system fails victims of stroke, not being able to compete with able-bodied persons. Your motion, Supervisor Mitchell, of July twenty-seven, twenty-one, said, "We must continue to assess and build on this work." Here is your opportunity to build. Allow persons with limited ability of both hands, currently two people at Jesse Owens Pool Facility, monthly access to those classes without registering. Provide onsite registration for those without internet. Provide volunteers to assist. I volunteer. Institute a pay-as-you-go system similar to the one used by Los Angeles City Park Pool.
Excuse me?
Insist that our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Your time has expired.
My time has expired.
Yes. May we have the next speaker, please?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joanna Reyes. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comments. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Joanna Reyes. I'm going to be speaking on item twelve, general public comment.
Please begin.
Um, okay. Hi, my name is Joanna Reyes. I'm a resident of District Three, and I'm representing the Central American Resource Center. We strongly support item twelve on the board, for the board to bring about a charter amendment for common sense checks and balances and accountability of the sheriff. For decades, Angelenos have witnessed the culture of corruption and impunity of the Sheriff's Department, leaving people who are stopped, incarcerated, at risk of abuse or worse. For more than fifty years, deputy gangs amongst the ranks and management of the Sheriff's Department have terrorized community members, especially in communities of color. We need a charter that works for the people of L A today and tomorrow, and gives us necessary tools for a sheriff, for when a sheriff violates the law and the public trust. Besides the governance, this is a matter of racial justice, and the county can no longer tinker around the edges of significant structural reform of the Sheriff's Department. We don't need another study or blue ribbon commission, nor can boards wait for state law to change. We don't know if that's going to happen. So now is the time to ask an advanced charter amendment that can strengthen the county's structure of checks and balances. So alongside directly impacted families, the checks, the sheriff coalition, and the growing coalition of more than a hundred community and labor organizations, and we urge the board to refer to voters for the twenty-twenty-two general election, for the November twenty-twenty-two general election, for us to be able to vote on this and make our voices heard. We really stand in strong support of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
As a reminder to address the board, if you have not already done so, please press one and then zero at this time. Do not press one and zero a second time, or you will be removed from the queue.
Thank you. We will now hear the Spanish interpretation of this reminder.
Como recordatorio, para dirigirse a la supervisor así aún no lo ha hecho, presione uno y luego el cero en este momento. No presione uno y cero por segunda vez porque será eliminado de la fila.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Donald Harlan. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, my name's Donald. I have six agenda items to comment on and general public comment, please. I don't know, I get two minutes and minutes for general public comment?
Thank you. Please begin.
Agenda? Thank you. Agenda item number seven, the proposed transfer of William S. Hart Park to Santa Clarita. That's no, that has to be stopped. If this is the people's property, that park is the people's property, it doesn't belong to L A County, that property does it, is not to be sold or giving it, given away. They're trying to use the transfer to Santa Clarita of that property to leverage more development. Definitely no, they're going to try and sell it, and they need to check some of the identities of some of the city council members over there in Santa Clarita, too. Okay, agenda item number one P, Rice Canyon Acquisition Fund. This is a big problem. L A County Sheriff, County Board of Supervisors, Oak Tree, Wells Fargo, they have some offices over here on Bunker Hill where they're trying to buy those over there. That property is not for sale, it's illegal. So you know that they have, by the end of this year, if they get the park in New Hall, they will have thirty billion dollars of illegal property they're claiming they're trying to transfer that they say the county or the city owns, not theirs. They will have thirty billion dollars of fraud over there, just in that area. And they need to be stopped. This is an attempt by the County Board of Supervisors to substantiate an illegal real estate deed deal bid for that area. They're trying to verify the illegal deal by collecting the money back, and that's Rice Canyon over in New Hall. Agenda item number twelve, sheriff oversight promoting accountability. You know, that's, you know, this is, L A County Sheriff worked for the County Board of Supervisors. Don't let anybody try and tell you anything else. L A County Sheriff and L A County Board of Supervisors, they're the same guys. If there's a conflict between them, there's not. But you know what? The sheriffs do need powers to wipe out some of the Board of Supervisors that are really bad. They really do. But this is going the other way, it looks like. Probably they shouldn't do that. And then the sale of surplus, number, agenda item number seventy-seven, sale surplus real property in West Covina. This is L A County Board of Supervisors creating their own oil well, giving the property to themselves, and now selling the gas, they're doing jobs, all kinds of stuff. They need, really need to look into the oil deals that are done by L A County Board of Supervisors through L A County. You know, they're supposed to supervise some of the contracts, but they're not supposed to be making them for themselves. You see, there's definitely something wrong going on there.
Excuse me? Your time has expired.
Yeah?
May we have the next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Caesar De La Cruz. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please begin.
Hello, my name is Caesar De La Cruz, and I'm a member of United Local Eleven, and I live in District Number Four. I'm so happy to see the board bring this urgently needed charter amendment to vote. Like, Union has stood with a wonderful family, so I'm giving shout-out times in the back. You know, and they're sitting at this moment, they didn't, they didn't take any responsibility. So I urge you to approve this, this, so we can vote in, in November. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Terri Weaver. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will be addressing on general public comments. You may begin.
Hello? I will be addressing the one pool and registration for handicapped individuals. There are two people there who will register. It's very difficult to do this by phone using one hand. I have one hand. I will be addressing the one pool and registration for handy staff individuals. There are two people there who will register. It's very difficult to do this by phone using one hand. I have one arm set. I would like to just be able to come and stop our swim lessons and not be put in the glory with the regular, uh, people. I would just like to, to come and take the class. I don't, I don't necessarily vote to this camp. I just want to make sure by calling to a class, I can get it. I'll pay the full amount. It's just that, it's that first time we're served, and it's the two of us, or at least a group that left us. So just be, want to be up there. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Carly Kirchen. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi there. I'd like to speak on general public comment, item 12 and item 52. My name is Carly Kirchen. Regarding item 52, given the lack of clarity surrounding the future operator of the yacht club, the county should not be awarding its current leaseholder, Cube Smart, a three- to five-year extension. Cube Smart is a public storage company with no experience managing restaurant operations, marina assets, or membership clubs. We need stable, qualified operators in our marina, so please reject this lease today and send it back to beaches and harbors. Regarding item number 12, I just want to indicate my strong support. The charter amendment will bring the Guardado family and others one step closer to justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Q. Jane Marie. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Yes, um, yes, my name is Pastor Q. from the Church Without Wall of Skid Row. I will be addressing agenda item number 12, as well as public comments.
You may begin.
Okay. Again, I'm Pastor Q. from the Church Without Wall of Skid Row with clergy and lady United Bank, and I'm in Justice and Clergy for Black Lives. My church is in District 1, and I live in District 4. Power without accountability is brutality. We strongly support item 12 and the board motion to bring about a charter amendment for common sense checks and balances and accountability of the sheriff. A lot of marginalized communities and folks don't have money to do recalls. We've got experience with that. We've got a long history of sheriff misconduct. That's why on November 1st, 2016, this board with Community Import appointed nine commissioners to serve on the civilian oversight commission of the Sheriff Department. That is why, prior to its inception, we worked tirelessly and attended almost every meeting to make sure this commission, as much as possible, would reflect the voice of the community. The sheriff recently said that the investigation into deputy gangs puts his deputies at risk. My question to the sheriff is this: When you defy the subpoenas of the civilian oversight commission and the Inspector General to answer allegations regarding deputy gangs and the Sheriff Department, weren't you putting both the public and the deputies, and your deputies, at risk? When you threatened to do investigations into every public official who attempted to hold you accountable, weren't you putting their lives at risk? Since the sheriff had defied every subpoena, we urge the board, again, to refer to the voters on November 22nd, on November 2022, the general election, and amendment, while Connie charged that will create common sense checks and balances and accountability of the sheriff. Again, power without accountability is brutality.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Ish. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Thank you. I'm addressing item number 15. Madam Chair and honorable members of the board, my name is Stephanie C., and I'm the Executive Director of Biocom California's Los Angeles office, the premier advocacy organization celebrating the life sciences industry in our state. I'm happy to express our sincere thanks to board Chair Mitchell and her team for their leadership on this vital motion that sends a powerful message that LA County remains committed to developing the most robust life science cluster not only in California but in the country. From the Life Sciences Cradle to Career Employment Pipeline to the Tenant Improvement Fund and the Life Sciences Ombudsperson, this motion will help the industry develop and retain talented, diverse Angelinos that will serve as our future employees, inventors, investors, and CEOs. Focusing the county resources on our industry and ensuring that issues, especially of equity and opportunity in underserved communities, are top of mind, Board Chair Mitchell is highlighting the critical role that our industry plays in building back our local economy with equity, and Biocom California stands ready to assist in any way that we can.
Excuse me?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. May we have the next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Shuing Chee. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Yes, hello. I will be addressing items 12 and 28. My name is Shuing Chee. I'm the Deputy Director of Programs and Campaigns at the California Immigrant Policy Center, and I live in District 1. I'm calling in strong support of item number 12, which would create much-needed sheriff's accountability. In addition to being an issue of good governance, this is also a matter of racial justice and immigrant justice. For decades, the unchecked power of the sheriff has disproportionately harmed immigrants and communities of color. This includes through sharing information with ICE and assaults and abuses in the jails and in the streets. The sheriff's office has sidestepped most attempts at oversight and accountability. The community has been strongly asking for these checks and balances, which are long overdue and also constitutional. The board's legal authority to remove the sheriff is clear and in line with the California Constitution, state statutes, and case law. The California Court of Appeals affirmed this power in the Penrod v. County of San Bernardino case, where it ruled that a county charter could permit the Board of Supervisors to remove a sheriff for cause by four-fifth vote. Changing our county charter can ensure essential oversight of the sheriff, therefore urge you to pass item number 12. Also for item number 28, I urge the board to reject all funding towards the Sheriff's Department, including the Federal Department of Homeland Security Fund, in this motion. The 1.7 million which would go to the Sheriff's Department will only be used to strengthen the Sheriff's Department's repression and violence against marginalized communities. It will enhance the Sheriff's Department's capacity for surveillance against the people that they are already targeting, such as the families of victims of deputy violence and deputy gangs, people who speak out against LA Sheriff's Department abuses and over-police communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Jed Kinsawa. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on the general public comment. Please begin.
Yes, I'll be addressing item number 46 and general public comment. My name is Jed Kinsawa. I'm a resident of North Hollywood, District 3, and I'm also the Communications Director at the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. I'm going to speak this morning on monkeypox. Supervisors, I ask you today to compel the County Department of Public Health to drastically step up efforts to educate the public, and in particular, the first affected populations, gay men and MSM, about basic prevention and awareness on this virus. Monkeypox vaccines are and will be in incredibly short supply, a failure of our federal government to maintain an adequate national stockpile, an embarrassment after nearly three years of COVID, however, it's a reality we must deal with in the short term. Until vaccine supply changes, public health should be doing everything in its power to educate the public on prevention methods. Twitter posts are not enough. LA County and our Department of Public Health must do better, giving people the tools they need to avoid infections and stop the spread of monkeypox, avoiding skin-to-skin contact with infected or potentially infected individuals, reducing the number of partners or anonymous partners in condom use, which we know is not completely pulled through, but county must really step up. I urge you to really get on the backs of county public health and have them step up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Valerie Vargas. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Good morning. My name is Valerie Vargas. I'm a resident of District 1, and I am representing Anthony Vargas, murdered by East Los Angeles Sheriff's Department on August 12, 2018. I would like to speak on agenda number 12. I strongly support item 12, the board motion to bring a charter amendment for common sense checks and balances and accountability of the sheriff. Deputy gangs and other forms of deputy violence have persisted because one sheriff administration, after the next, has failed to enact and enforce policies that provide meaningful and consistent discipline when deputies harassed, abused, and murdered. Anthony Vargas was murdered because of a deputy gang initiation, and my family is a living example of the aftermath of harassment and brutality at their hands. We are not the only family. Hundreds of families have been affected, and some do not have the means to come forward. Putting this charter amendment on the ballot, with us in the trauma, we are forced to manage on a daily basis and minimize the PTS we have to live with within our lifetime. We need to protect our remaining kids and ourselves from the gangs of badgers who carry impunity to kill and silence their victims.
Excuse me?
The county must stop protecting homicidal employees and...
Excuse me, your time has expired.
...protecting...
May we have the next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Carlos Montes. Please state the agenda items you are addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Yes, good morning, Carlos Montes. Public comment, agenda items 12, 11, and 16, I support. My name is Carlos Montes. I'm a member of Centro CFO Community Service Organization, and also part of Check the Sheriff. I'm here to speak in support of agenda item number 12. But also, I want to add that, recommend that you add stronger oversight language to the motion, specifically to give stronger oversight powers to the COC and the Office of Inspector General. Also, to make the COC a permanent Department of the County. I support, you know, the motion as it agrees to remove the sheriff for violating the law, but I think we need stronger oversight over the sheriff. And I want to thank Hilda Solis and Holly Mitchell for making the motion. But I also want to point out that, you know, I support and look forward to Janice Hahn supporting this motion, because as you can see, several young men have been killed in Supervisor Hahn's area. We had the mom of Esa Cervantes speak. Ari Brisano was killed in Maywood during a mental health breakdown, and there was ruled a homicide. We also have Edgar Ortiz, who was killed March 3rd of this year in Bellflower, and we were the first to march to the Lakewood Sheriff's Station. So Lakewood Sheriff's Station has problems. There's many, if you look at the Lakewood Sheriff's Station, there's been many killings, especially Oscar Ramirez, a young unarmed man in plain daylight near Paramount High School was killed. That's under investigation as a murder. So please, not only vote for this motion, but try to add language for stronger civilian oversight, specifically yourself as the Board of Supervisors and the Civilian Oversight Commission. We've been demanding community civilian control for the last 50 years. I grew up in East LA, getting harassed by the sheriffs, being arrested. I've been in the county jail, beaten up. I've been raided by the sheriffs for my political activism.
Your time has expired.
Thank you very much.
May we have the next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Bridget Prince. Please state the agenda items you will be addressing today and whether you will address on general public comment. You may begin.
Hi, I'll, I'll address on general public comment, and I'm calling in support of item 12. My name is Bridget Prince. I live in the city of San Gabriel, within the county of Los Angeles, and we've lived here for over 40 years. And I would like to strongly support item 12, and also to thank Supervisor Solis and Mitchels for their decision to put this item in front of the voters. The need is great to be able to have these checks and balances. That's what our society is built on, and, and we need to continue this. There's, there's just been current and past sheriffs that have violated community trust over and over again with lawsuits and shootings and misconduct, and I think you hear the passion from the other speakers as well, that this is something that just needs to be handled, and it's, it's a very good thing to vote in favor of today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May we have the next speaker, please?
Madam Chair, there are no other speakers in the queue to address the board.
Thank you. Well, our 90-minute time allotted for public speakers has come to an end, and I'd like to thank all of those that called in to speak. If you were unable to provide your comments, you may submit written comments, as indicated on the agenda, and we'll continue to accept all written comments that come in during the meeting, which will become a part of the official record for today. Executive Officer, please indicate the agenda item numbers on which we will be voting.
The following items are before you: 3 through 10, 13 as revised, 16 through 21, 23 and 24, 26 through 29, 31 through 57, 59 through 79, 81 through 89, 98 through 90D, 93 through 97, 1D through 7D, and 1P.
Moved by Supervisor Mitchell, seconded by Supervisor Q. To approve these items with the exemptions noted by the executive officer, please call the roll.
Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Q?
Aye.
Supervisor Q, aye. Supervisor Hahn?
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Supervisor Barker?
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Motion carries, 5 to 0.
Thank you. Colleagues, we'll begin today with Set Matter 1, followed by Set Matter 2 and A10, which will be taken up together, followed by items 11, 12, 14, 15, and 22, and we will conclude with item 80. Set Matter 1, the American Rescue Plan Funding Report. We'll hear, as we do every board meeting, from Dr. D'Artagnan Scorsese, Director of our Racial Equity Initiative, and Sky Patrick, our county librarian. Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. It's an incredible pleasure to be here with all of you. Good morning, Madam Chair, and to the members of the public. Today's presentation marks a 13th update in our series of regular presentations on the county's progress implementing your board's American Rescue Plan Phase 1 spending plan. Next slide. As is our regular practice, this slide previews topics we intend to cover today. I'm happy to share our scorecard rating from the California Pan-Ethnic Health Care, Health Network, who released 11, who released scorecards for 11 California counties after conducting research on publicly available information to assess how we've been spending or allocated our funding, and we'll share more about their findings later in the presentation. I will also provide a global program overview detailing the current status of projects in the design, development, and approval process. And for today's department spotlight, Sky Patrick, Director of the Los Angeles County Library, will present on three of their ARC-funded projects, including the Laptop and Hotspot Lending and Work Ready Program, Park Connect, and Early Literacy and Education Programs. Next slide. So as previously mentioned, the California Pan-Ethnic Health Network conducted research on 11 California counties, each receiving more than $100 million through state and local fiscal recovery funds. They did so in order to evaluate how we've been spending critical public relief dollars under ARC. The 11 counties, aside from Los Angeles, included Fresno, Kern, Orange, Sacramento, San Bernardino, San Diego, San Francisco, both the city and the county, San Joaquin, San Islos, and Ventura. They developed a 51-question equity metric to examine in-depth county efforts to promote racial equity, engage constituents, and ensure transparency, accessibility, and accountability of funding during the period of March 2021 through February 2022. Areas evaluated ranged from where funding was being spent to how the county was addressing inequities exacerbated by the pandemic. For example, did the county use funding to invest in COVID-19 services, mental health, behavioral health, and substance use services, or other services such as food, housing, and financial assistance, transportation, and infrastructure, to name a few more? Or did the county explicitly articulate a vision or mission to reduce racial disparities? And were local community-based organizations in community-defined practices that specifically serve communities most impacted by the pandemic, including African-American, Latino, Latina, Latinx, Asian-American? Latinx, Asian American, Pacific Islander, American Indian, Native American communities, and other communities of color as well? So, next slide. So as a result of their analysis, I'm proud to report that Los Angeles County was the only jurisdiction of the 11 counties that received an A grade overall. And as I mentioned earlier, we were the only agency, and we were the only agency to receive an A+ in the category Promoting Racial Equity. You can see the rating comparisons by the county and the table here on your right. LA County was rated high based upon having one of the most robust spending plans in the state, an array of equity-driven investments ranging from meeting the immediate health and socioeconomic needs of communities during COVID-19 to supporting and piloting forward-looking programs such as those under the Care First, Jails Last Initiative. We're also rated high based upon working with community stakeholders to embed racial and social equity goals and principles into our American Rescue Plan Act spending plan and projects, as well as having a comprehensive public website and ARPA equity dashboard to demonstrate the detailed implementation progress with the public. Next slide. So at this time, I'd like to share our global program overview. As of July 11, 2022, 34 projects are in the design and development phase, which entails a process to clarify the goals and outcomes of the project, its potential impact on reducing disparities caused or exacerbated by the pandemic, and how to measure that impact. Of these 34 projects, already technical assistance providers are actively partnering, meeting with departments on 26 projects to support the design and development of their equitable, support design and equitable implementation of these projects. 13 projects have been returned to the department for further revisions. A total of 49 projects have been approved for launch and implementation, which equals Next slide. Next, Sky Patrick will highlight three of their ARC-funded projects, including Laptop and Hotspot Lending, as well as Work Ready Programs, Park and Connect, and the Early Literacy and Education Programs, a total investment of $6,330,000. Sky?
Thank you, Dr. Scorsa. Can you hear me okay? Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Scorsa, and Madam Chair, and members of the board. Today I'll be highlighting three library projects recently approved by the American Rescue Plan Funding. The first two projects directly align with your board's Digital Divide Initiative led by ISD, for which we're a collaborating agency. Next slide. The next slide. Thank you. Members of the board, you're acutely aware of how COVID-19 pandemic disproportionately affected and impacted the health and jobs of minoritized communities in LA County and further amplified, excuse me, the need to address inequities of these communities and populations. The library has historically played an key role in bridging the digital divide for our county's communities, and, so sorry, excuse me, and we are thrilled to be able to advance this work along with the board and other county departments by utilizing funds from various sources to obtain Chromebooks and Hot Pot Spots devices. Customers can check out laptops and hotspots. These device kits are made available to check out as part of the library's Workforce Development Program Work Ready. The kits enable county customers to apply for benefits, seek and apply for employment, learn new skills, and at one point in time assist children in distance learning, and of course allow families to seek care through telemedicine. So far, we've had 900 kits been made available through this project at our 85 locations. Next slide. Thanks to the board and the CEO's recent approval and allocation of $3.4 million in ARC funding, we'll be able to expand this laptop and hotspot lending effort. This includes obtaining 1,400 more devices to check out as we lengthen and allow us to lengthen the internet subscription period. In turn, this program will allow us to expand digital literacy skills to more locations and more populations. This service expansion will continue to prioritize COVID-19-affected communities that have been identified by CEO's already equity explorer tool. Efforts and activities to reach this population will include assigning resources based on need, utilizing the equity tool, targeted marketing and outreach to inform underserved and unfinished communities of the availability of these resources, and the inclusion of material in multiple languages to aid learners and users than the user's primary language. The project goal includes increasing access to technological resources in communities most impacted by the pandemic and historically underserved, marginalized, and or adversely affected groups. And also, it ensures that the county residents have access to LA County Library's virtual programming, digital library, educational resources that support critical job readiness, improve literacy, and attainment of educational goals. This project will be launched by the end of this month. After CEO approval in June, we are starting the procurement process now. Next slide. With the same purpose of bridging the digital divide and supporting economic recovery, the library launched its Park and Connect program in September 2020. With the CARES funds, excuse me, and the partnership with ISD, the library was able to implement Park and Connect Wi-Fi access point throughout 34 of our LA County Library locations, leveraging our current gigabyte infrastructure to extend internet connectivity to our library's parking lots. Since this project has launched, we've had more than 419,000 internet sessions logged through this program. As all of you are aware, the internet is a vital utility as digital spaces have become the ubiquitous way to access information and a variety of other services. The library is receiving $1.5 million in ARC funding to expand programs, enabling us to scale this service throughout the remaining 49 library locations. This will help address digital inequity. By increasing access to the internet, residents will be able to utilize free Wi-Fi 24/7 at any of our county library locations. In addition to a similar project goal described earlier in the laptop lending program, this project seeks to boost usage of the program, increase awareness of the Park and Connect in high priority communities surrounding participating libraries through marketing and outreach. This project's procurement process began this past month, and the project expansion anticipates to take place September 2022 throughout December 2023. Next slide. Our final project is centered around early literacy and education programs aimed at mitigating the pandemic's negative impact on learning and academic achievement. $1.43 million in ARC funding will allow LA County Library to provide educational resources to specific areas with low or lower high school graduation rates to help increase the number of high school graduates and increase students' interest in continued education after high school. These programs and services and resources will support early literacy and education of youth, children, families in the highest and/or high-need areas of the county through the Equity Explorer Tool. This project aims to address inequities, gaps in education by pandemic-induced learning loss, barriers to access, and improvement of long-term intergenerational and multigenerational outcomes. Next slide. ARC funding will assist in implementing our four mission-critical library programs at 12 locations in our highest or high-need communities as identified by the Equity Explorer Tool. It will be Reading Stars, which is an intergenerational tutoring program; the Reading Machine, which is an early literacy mobile service; Maker Mobile or Make Mo, which is our STEM and STEAM educational mobile services; and of course, our school readiness program. And the key program goals and activities include building and improving reading proficiency in youth, children, and caregivers, increasing access to STEM educational programming, and increasing school readiness and academic preparedness. This project includes several target communities, including school-aged youth in neighborhoods that have been historically divested or under-resourced, minority and/or limited speaking, English-speaking residents and their families, single-parent households, and system-impacted or system-involved individuals. Finally, the library is also working with an EDI-focused educational organization to update our school readiness storytime content to incorporate EDI elements more broadly throughout the program. This is targeted to start its launch September, this fall, this September, and will run through the end of 2023. I want to thank the board for allowing me to share some of the work that the county library has done and its goals to build back better and more equitably. Thank you.
What amazing news. I don't know about the rest of you, but I get really excited when I see letter grades, As and A pluses. So thanks to CPIN for including us in the study, and really thrilled to know where we stand as a county based on our focused effort, particularly in promoting racial equity investment. So thank you. Thrilled to hear about the library's work once again, that there'll be an additional 1,400 device kits to be loaned to library customers throughout the county. So I'm looking forward to hearing about that. And will Ms. Patrick have staff connect with you, because I'd like to know what your plan is for making sure that the kits are truly equitably allocated among the local branches. So we'll circle back with you on that. But congratulations to you both. Appreciate hearing it. First, we're going to hear from Supervisor Kuehl, followed by Supervisor Han and Solis. Supervisor Kuehl.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. First, let me thank you, Dr. Scorsa, not only for your presentation and report, but for your work. As the chair indicated, this is not an easy evaluation to go through in terms of what constitutes movement toward equity, especially in a county of 10 million people. So I was very, very happy to see that we received such a high mark. I mean, we all, as Holly said, we all like getting As, but an A+. And I have to say, it's at least a couple of things that go into this. First of all, great credit to you for picking up really what is a brand-new kind of aspirational office and making it real, with great thanks to the federal government for helping with the resources. And secondly, just great pride in the intentionality shown in the county, not just the five of us, but everyone who works with us, our department heads, our staff. It takes effort to recognize racism, to name it, to work against it, and we're far from getting there, but I really believe that your work has been central, and thank you very much for it. To Director Patrick, I want to say from the first minute that we interviewed you for this job, I thought, oh, will she leave Florida and come here because, like, she's going to make a big difference here? And I realized, none of us does it alone. I know that's the first thing you're going to say, with credit to your staff who have really, really been asked to step up even more over the past three years. But your invention, and again, speaking of intentionality, thinking about ways to really, really work with and be there for our communities in ways that they need and ways that others hadn't even thought of. Yes, we knew electronic, you know, access is important and became even more important during the pandemic, but you recognized that we could and should do something about it. And we agreed, and it's made an enormous difference, especially in communities that did not have access, do not have access. I mean, the picture of the woman working in her car, this is not just, oh, we're going online and reading a book, which would be great. I'd like to recommend Horse, which I'm reading at the moment, a fantastic novel, but also to do our work. I mean, so many people didn't even have access to their work from home and were forced to go in at times when, you know, it may not have been safe. So thank you for that work. Also want to bring to your attention our library in the city of San Fernando, which is in an area that has always been under-resourced and in need, services to surrounding communities of Pacoima and Solmar and others. So hopefully, they can be included as one of our libraries of need because there are a lot of people out there that don't have access. And again, thank you both very much, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And let me also add my voice to the congratulations for getting the A, but also the A+ in equity. That's a real affirmation and a verification of what we have been striving to do. And this Set Matter 1, Madam Chair, I know you were the impetus behind this to ensure and to keep track of how we're spending these rescue funds for the residents of LA County in an equitable manner. So that's a great affirmation. Good work, everybody, and thank you to Sky Patrick for that great presentation. It's just so great to see our library offering so many innovative, creative, and accessible programs to really try to mitigate this learning loss that's happened, particularly with our young people in light of this pandemic. You were the department that really was a lifeline to so many during the pandemic, to many students who were having difficulty with virtual learning. So thank you so much for that. I'm happy to see that our ARP dollars are going for the funding of these kinds of programs in your department, Sky. You know, one of the things each of our offices does is we recommend to our CEO ways to spend these ARP funds, and we each put in a letter of request. I always included the library in mine, but I was looking towards funding some capital projects to upgrade the infrastructure of our libraries, and have been turned down regularly because it was not deemed COVID-related. So it was interesting to see this presentation to say, well, the library is certainly, it's appropriate to fund the library based on mitigating COVID, but I still think I would like the CEO to take another look at whether or not we can fund some infrastructure programs because while all your programs are so important and virtual is probably going to be the future forever because I think we're always going to have some sort of virus amongst us, but I think you and your programs, Sky, would benefit from an expanded footprint because virtual is good, but the physical space, I think, provides even more opportunities. And there are a lot of our communities, particularly those that we're talking about that have been under-resourced, could use some infrastructure modernization and expansion through these dollars because I think that's also part of the rescue. So good job, Sky, but I'm just throwing a "check it out again" message. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you a lot, as already been said. And Dr. Scorsa, congratulations on receiving, on behalf of the county, such a high rating for equity and inclusion. That's great. Hope to see more of that and really how we can actualize it with our departments and all the departments that really, we're struggling with, some of which we're talking about today on our board's agenda with respect to services, whether it's mental health. with respect to services, whether it's mental health or whether it's incarceration, probation, all those things that I really do believe if we can lift up in some way, those would be monumental, I think, for us, for some of us that have worked so hard to see the change. But thank you. Congratulations on that very well-noted accomplishment. And I wanted to just, you know, say thank you to Sky Patrick. Sky, we were here at the very beginning when you started. We had a lot of hopes and dreams, and you fulfilled many of them with a limited budget, I might say, and a structural deficit that we still continue to face. And the reality for me is, I really want to give thanks to the federal government and the state government. But more importantly, the ARP funding, the American Rescue Plan funding that comes through the Biden administration. This has really given us the opportunity to be creative here in LA County. And I think I would be remiss if we don't remind people where this funding comes from, because it's only here for a limited time. And then we must think about what trajectory we take on and where we're going to go. And so I hope that, Sky, if there's ways that we can help you to establish more fortified funding as we move forward, please let us know so we put those out on the table and work with our CEO and our communities. Because I think our communities, like everyone else, believes that your programs are curbside. They're a staple of our communities. That's a place where people go because they trust the libraries. And I've had the opportunity to visit many of them in my district and can see that the tablets, the internet access, and just the fact that people can go in to look for a job or get on an ESL program or GED program or citizenship program are fully, fully important and very impactful for communities that are going through so much stress. And we want to help, I want to help in any way I can. I think I have, I think I believe I have maybe the second or the first-most libraries now of all the districts now because of the redistricting that occurred. So now, more than ever, it's front and center for me and my staff and for the many constituents that we represent because they call all the time. And they're very pleased with what we've been able to do. But again, I want to remind all of us that this money came through the federal government. And thanks to our staff and your innovation. And I do want to thank your library staff because not only were they helping us during this time, helping our students, but your folks were out there as disaster workers, helping to feed people, helping to administer our COVID testing, exams, and vaccinations, and I'll never forget that. And I want them to understand that they are truly our heroes as well, and we should always honor them. So I look forward to working with you and would love to hear any ideas that you might have off the top of your head about how we deal with the structural deficit that we know we're facing. And it's not to poo-poo anything. It's more like, I get it, and I want to be helpful to you and to the rest of the staff that work for us there in the county. Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know, Sky, if you want to just say something about that, the structural deficit, what some of our plans are.
Thank you, Supervisors, and Supervisor Solis, for just uplifting the work that's happened within the department during the pandemic, before the pandemic, and then this, I was going to say post-pandemic, but I don't think that's a real thing. You know, this staff works very hard, as all staffs do here in the county and all of the departments. And so I definitely appreciate you shedding a light on the very hard-working staff of LA County. One thing I will say, we have a structural deficit. We've had a pending structural deficit for several years. And I will say thank you to the board for always attempting to backfill that deficit. You all have shown a tremendous amount of faith in us, in the work that we do by continuing to move us forward. I know that we haven't solved the deficit, but we have had been able to mitigate some of the issues. All of you are aware that we've had to reduce services in our city libraries. And I do would only say that my task now is to figure out how to supplement those hours and get them back to the pre-pandemic hours that they all had because our library and our services are critical. People use us in a variety of ways, including all the ways that Supervisor Solis just mentioned, the ways that Supervisor Han mentioned. We are the center of each community. And anything that I can do to try and uplift the work that we do daily, of course, I'm going to take that charge. And I do appreciate each of you just really understanding the importance of the work. At this point in time, I don't have a better plan than we've had. We've done every kind of efficiency study that we can in the public library. We've retooled our staff. We've recommitted to a new service model. I mean, we've been very, very efficient in our execution of our budget. And frankly, I don't know that there's anything else I can do at this time for the budget. So I think we have ongoing conversations with CEO, our new CEO. Thank you so much, Fisia. And she is also very aware of the work that we do and very aware of the structural deficit. So we'll continue to work with CEO to try and mitigate this issue.
Sure, perhaps working with also our legislative team in the next session in the state legislature. And I think there's going to be an initiative on the ballot that's going to allow us, if there's support for it, to have more funding to arts programs at schools. And I would think that perhaps there's a way to work that in so that we can also provide services there, because you do that now. I remember we funded some of those projects through our discretionary funding, but I think there could be other opportunities to look at as well and how we can interact and weave that forward. So I'll be happy to work with you on that. Thank you very much for the presentation, both of you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions? All right, seeing none. This is, a report is received and filed, and such will be the order. Again, thank you both for the good news and the presentations. Moving on to Set Matter Two. Public Health will now hear, move on to Set Matter Two, Public Health Order, and hear a presentation from Doctors Ferrer, Director of Public Health, and Galley, Director of Health Services, which will be taken up with them, which we will take up along with a ten, Discussion and Consideration of Necessary Actions Related to Declared Outbreaks of Infectious Disease, in this case, monkeypox. And this item was held by Supervisor Han. Supervisor Han, let's begin with the presentation from both Doctors Ferrer and Galley. So good morning to you both.
Good morning, and thank you so much, Chair Mitchell and the entire Board of Supervisors for your continued leadership and support throughout our ongoing response efforts. I'm pleased to share the latest. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. I'm pleased to share the latest on the COVID response with you today, followed by an update from Dr. Singal on monkeypox. Dr. Singal is our chief medical director here, and she'll be helping with that update on monkeypox. In today's COVID update, I'll share our current COVID metrics, including our designation in the CDC's Community Levels Framework and a projection when we might move into high-community level. I'll also share an overview of our early alert signals, including an update on the circulating variants and subvariants in LA County, and a review of the considerations guiding the decision to return to universal masking should LA County remain in the high-community level designation for two consecutive weeks. I'll take the first slide. Cases, hospitalizations, and test positivity, as you can see, remain elevated. Today, we're reporting 5,170 new cases. The average number of cases reported over this past week was 5,300 new cases a day. And as a reminder, our case numbers are obviously an undercount since they don't include positive results from the over-the-counter tests. The daily test positivity rate is hovering at about 15%. That primarily reflects the increasing rate of transmission associated with new highly infectious COVID subvariants and sublineages. We're also experiencing continued increases in the number of COVID-positive hospitalized patients over the past week, from 886 last Tuesday to 1,079 yesterday. Among those hospitalized who are infected with COVID, about 42% are hospitalized with COVID-related illness. This rate has remained relatively stable this past month. Sadly, we are starting to see increases in deaths for the first time since the winter surge, with daily deaths at 10 or more deaths for six out of the last seven days. Later in this presentation, I'll share some data showing how the death rate from COVID surpasses that for many other health threats in the county. For those who have lost a loved one during this pandemic, our thoughts and prayers remain with you during these very difficult times. Next slide. This slide is actually now looking at trend lines for the seven-day average daily cases in the green line, hospital admissions, the orange line, and deaths in the blue line. And we're looking at it for the past year since last June. As you can see on this slide, at the beginning of June 2021, we were seeing very low numbers of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths, actually the lowest numbers that we've seen for a while. Many had been vaccinated, and the vaccines were very effective at reducing the risk of infection, in addition to reducing the risk of severe disease and death. However, as you can see, by the second week in July, cases and hospitalizations were again increasing in LA County. This is 2021. Increases in deaths would follow later in the month. The Delta variant had arrived in LA County, and it was fueling this increase. The Delta surge peaked at about 3,500 new cases and 215 new hospital admissions per day. And as you may remember, with the surge in cases last summer, on July 17, 2021, a universal indoor mask mandate went into effect for everyone ages two and older in LA County as a protective measure. While we're not seeing anywhere near the devastation this summer that we saw during last winter's Omicron surge, we are seeing a much higher case numbers than we saw during the peak of the Delta surge. It's unlikely that we are at the peak of our recent surge, given the increased circulation of new subvariants of concern. And we've already had an average of over 5,300 cases being reported per day. While thankfully, our average number of hospital admissions per day, which I believe is at 146 new admissions today, has not yet risen to the peak level that we saw last summer at 250 per day. With increasing hospitalizations, it is possible that we will see numbers that are very similar in the weeks to come. As I noted earlier, although many of those hospitalized are not there because of COVID illness, the rising numbers indicate that for some individuals, COVID remains a very dangerous virus. Next slide. We continue to track the impact of the pandemic on LA County using the CDC's COVID-19 Community Levels Framework, which is a measure of the strain on our healthcare system caused by COVID-19. And it utilizes one case rate metric and two hospitalization metrics. Currently, for hospitalization metrics, we're using LA County data. We do remain at the COVID-19 community level of medium. This is based on yesterday's numbers. But we're very likely to move into high later this week. Our seven-day case rate is currently at 387 cases per week per 100,000 people. This is an increase from a week ago, when the case rate was 356. The first of our two hospital metrics in the CDC Community Levels Framework is the seven-day total of new hospital admissions per 100,000. Using the LA County-specific data, you could see yesterday we were at 8.8 admissions per 100,000 people. This is a 70% increase from one month ago. And as I've noted earlier, once LA County reaches 10 new admissions per 100,000 residents, the county will enter the high-community level designation by CDC. The second hospital metric in the CDC Community Levels Framework is the seven-day average for the proportion of staff in patient beds occupied by COVID-19 patients. As of yesterday, 4.6% of beds were occupied by COVID patients in LA County. And as you can see, the threshold for moving into high, if this metric were to be elevated, is again at 10% of beds or greater. And we're not anywhere close to that now. We will update the community level metrics on Thursday. Next slide. For the past few weeks, we've been repeatedly assessing when our hospital admission rate is likely to reach or surpass 10 admissions per 100,000 people per week, which would, as I noted, move us into that high-level designation. Based on the last time we ran this analysis late last week, you know, the projected date of crossing into that threshold is this Thursday, July 14. This projection was based on a rate of increase in hospital admissions over the prior two weeks. And given the continued increase in hospital admissions that I noted on the earlier slide, we do anticipate that by this Thursday, the county will move into that high level. Should we remain in high-community level designation for two consecutive weeks, the universal indoor masking in alignment with CDC would be implemented across the county. Next slide. We do also monitor the early alert signals. And today, we're sharing data on six signals. We're not including school outbreaks in our early alert signals during the summer. And at the moment, there's a problem at the state, so our wastewater data update is not available today. As you can see on this table, four of the six early alert metrics we're tracking continue to convey cause for high concern. And the other two are in medium concern. I'm just going to focus on a couple of these metrics in the next slide because there hasn't been much change since I reported out at the last board meeting. But if we can go to the next slide. The Omicron variant, as you could see, accounts for 100% of our sequenced specimens. But the proportions of subvariants of Omicron does continue to shift. The greatest concern remains a steady increase in the proportions of the BA dot four and BA dot five subvariants. These are shown by the red sections at the top of each bar on the right. To date, we've had a total of almost 700 positive sequenced specimens of these two variants. More of them, 392 of them, were BA dot five. In the week that ended June 18th, so I want to note, this is a two-week lag, BA dot four and BA dot five accounted for 40% of all specimens that were sequenced. That's two and a half times higher than it was just two weeks earlier. The CDC is estimating that across the country, as of the week that ended July 2nd, the BA dot four and BA dot five subvariants of Omicron combined accounted for just over 70% of the specimens. That's a pretty big increase from just under 40% two weeks ago. In both the national data and the LA County data, BA dot four and BA dot five both continue to outcompete the BA dot two subvariant and all of its sublineages. BA dot five subvariant is increasing here in LA County as a faster rate, as you could see here, than BA dot four. Both BA dot four and BA dot five are of special concern because of their ability to evade prior immunity and reinfect people who were already infected with other Omicron subvariants. It's highly likely that the increased circulation, particularly of BA dot five, will contribute to increased risk for infection among many in our community. Moreover, a few days ago, the WHO highlighted with concern the spread of a new sublineage of the BA dot two Omicron subvariant. Right now, it's being numbered BA dot two dot seven five. And it's considered a lineage under-monitoring by the WHO. It appears to have additional mutations that facilitate spread and evade immunity. And it has been spreading in India. There are six cases so far that were identified in the United States, and two were in California, none in LA County. In light of new emerging subvariants of this virus, though, we echo the statement of Dr. Ted Rose, who's the Director General of the WHO, who noted the importance of using tried and tested public health measures to mitigate risks, such as good ventilation, masks, physical distancing, and staying home if sick. Next slide. With more cases, we're also seeing more people that need medical attention. And we showed you the data on the hospitals, but this is data on the emergency departments. And there's a similar picture at our urgent care centers. Both are filled with many folks that are looking for care for their COVID-related illness. As you can see on this slide, the blue line shows the seven-day rolling average percentage of emergency department encounters, which were COVID-related, between March 1st and July 3rd of this year. And as you can see, the proportion of emergency department cases that have been involved, people seeking care for COVID, has been steadily increasing, and it does remain at elevated concern. For the seven-day period that ended July 8th, over 9% of ED encounters across the county were classified as COVID-related. This is different from hospitals. This is not incidental COVID. These are people who are coming in with COVID-related illness. This is a lot higher than the 6% that we saw just a month ago. So we'll continue, of course, to monitor this closely. Next slide. With increasing cases, we also have troubling increases in outbreaks across most of our sectors. This leads to both disruptions across work sites and increased spread of the virus. The slide shows the trend lines for the seven-day rolling average number of active outbreaks in three different sectors since the beginning of April of this year. Outbreaks are considered active until two weeks have passed since the last case in the facility. The blue line shows an outbreak, says a reminder, are where we have transmission at a work site. The blue line shows the outbreak trend in settings serving people experiencing homelessness. The orange line shows the outbreak trend in skilled nursing facilities. And the purple line shows the trend for outbreaks in workplaces and places of worship. And obviously, they're all increasing, although there's been some fluctuation over this time period. There's been an especially concerning increase, as you could see, in outbreaks at skilled nursing facilities and at work sites and places of worship. This is likely fueled by these more infectious variants and the fact that we had a lot of travel and gathering over the summer holidays. We do have multiple public health teams that work with our community partners and our businesses and our facilities to investigate and control all of these outbreaks. Next slide. As we monitor the trends in the early alert signals, we do continue to note the disproportionate impact of COVID among some communities, including in communities with higher rates of poverty. These tables show hospitalization and death rates from COVID by vaccination status for four different community income levels. The rates cover a ninety-day period that ended in late June. As you can see, vaccines continue to offer powerful protection against serious illness and disease. And fully vaccinated people were hospitalized and died at a much lower rate across the board than unvaccinated people. However, vaccines, as I've noted before, are not an equalizer. And disparities persist among vaccinated individuals. Vaccinated people living in communities where thirty to a hundred percent of the households live in poverty are nearly one and a half times more likely to be hospitalized and almost two times more likely to die than vaccinated individuals that live in areas with less than ten percent of households in poverty. Vaccinated individuals living in our poorest communities actually have higher rates of hospitalization than unvaccinated individuals living in the wealthiest communities. And unvaccinated individuals in communities with high poverty were about ten times more likely to be hospitalized or die than those who were unvaccinated and lived in the wealthiest communities. Families with fewer resources are more likely to have more exposures at work, live in crowded conditions, and have one or more chronic health conditions than those with more resources. This places those individuals at higher risk of suffering the severe effects from COVID. Since vaccination alone is not sufficient to erase the troubling inequities we see and continue to see, efforts are needed. We need to continue our efforts to protect those who are at greater risk. Next slide. There's a lot of misinformation circulating about COVID right now, including that at this point, it only causes mild illness. Unfortunately, this isn't true. And COVID is still one of the leading causes of death in LA County. As we all know, and you can see on this slide, COVID has caused thousands of deaths every year since the pandemic began in LA County. And the number of deaths from COVID this year from the Omicron variant and its sub-variants is still high. It's already over forty-three hundred deaths, and it will clearly increase before the end of this year. Even during only the first half of this year, with COVID vaccines and therapeutics widely available, we have already seen more deaths from COVID than we have seen annually from any other infectious diseases. And three times as many deaths from COVID as we saw on average during a pre-pandemic flu season. So this is before COVID because we had very little flu during COVID. COVID continues to be much more severe than the common cold, which in LA County is associated with only about one death per year. And as I noted, more severe than influenza, which averages about fourteen hundred deaths per year. Annual COVID deaths are also significantly higher than annual deaths from drug overdoses and motor vehicle accidents. As a community, we implement many protective measures to reduce motor vehicle fatalities and injuries. And everyone needs to follow these, including traffic rules, car safety requirements, and mandatory use of seatbelts. Given the disproportionate impact of COVID on people of color and those with less resources, and given the reality, as we can see on this table, that COVID still presents dangerous risks, I do think it's appropriate to use a similar strategy as what we use to prevent motor vehicle injuries and fatalities. And that is to take sensible actions in the case of COVID that reduce viral transmission. Next slide. Effective mitigation of COVID continues to require strategies for reducing illness severity and death and strategies for reducing spread. The two approaches are inherently interconnected. And both are essential for reducing disproportionality and protecting those most vulnerable. Vaccinations, boosters, and therapeutics provide powerful protection against severe illness, hospitalizations, and death. And that is still very much the case, as we just saw. These measures not only offer protection for the individuals receiving the vaccine or the treatment, but they also protect others in the community and reduce stress on the healthcare system. However, mitigation measures that reduce severe illness are most effective if they're accompanied by additional strategies that reduce transmission. You don't get sick if you don't get infected. And when transmission is high, many more people are exposed and get infected, creating more risk for everyone, but particularly for those most vulnerable. Universal masking and widespread use of testing are effective tools for reducing viral transmission. Masks provide a physical barrier and testing lets a person know their status so they can avoid infecting others. When faced with rising cases, hospitalizations, and deaths, we are advantaged if we use all available mitigation measures at our disposal to best protect ourselves and those most vulnerable. Next slide. Studies do continue to show widespread, that widespread universal masking with well-fitting, high-quality masks remains one of the simplest, most effective measures to reduce transmission of COVID. I'm just going to cite a couple of studies. One study that, you know, really looked back at twenty twenty showed that counties that had mask mandates had case rates that were thirty-five percent lower than counties that didn't have those mandates. There was an elegant study done in the fall of twenty twenty-one on school districts in Arkansas, looked at those that had a mask requirement and those that didn't have such a requirement, and the case rates in those districts with the mask requirements were twenty-three percent lower. Studies also show that respirators continue to provide particularly good protection. The twenty twenty-one study in California found that people who regularly used respirators like N ninety-fives or KN ninety-fives had eighty-three percent lower odds of testing positive than people who never wore masks. Universal masking is an accepted practice in many other parts of the world as well and needs to remain a key tool when transmission is very high. Next slide. As it is likely that we'll need to return to universal indoor masking, I want to close by noting that indoor masking continues to be a required safety measure in many sectors of our county. Specifically, indoor masking is required in healthcare settings, public transit and transit hubs, long-term care settings, shelters and cooling centers, and correctional facilities. Businesses and employers are allowed to require masks at work, and many have done just that, either by maintaining their indoor masking requirement throughout the pandemic or reinstating one as cases began increasing. And indoor masking continues to be required at work sites where there are outbreaks. And it's also required for all individuals during the ten days after a COVID diagnosis or an exposure. If LA County moves into the high community level and stays there for two weeks, indoor masking would expand to include all indoor spaces, including all indoor public spaces, including shared office spaces, manufacturing facilities, retail stores, and indoor events. It would apply to the indoor areas of restaurants and bars, the indoor areas of children's programming, and all educational settings. As a reminder, with universal indoor masking, masks are not required for those using outdoor spaces because of the risk of transmission in an outdoor space is significantly lower than it is indoors. Masks are also not required indoors for those who are actively eating or drinking, or those who are younger than two. I do recognize that when we return to universal indoor masking to help reduce high spread, for many, this will feel like a step backwards. It may be more useful to recognize that we have a very rich toolkit that we can use to cope with the uncertainty of the trajectory of this pandemic. All of the tools we have can help us get through the different challenges. When transmission is very high, universal indoor masking makes a lot of sense because it helps us reduce risk. When transmission is lower, it's appropriate to return to recommendations. I want to thank the millions of LA County residents who continue to take care of each other. Your actions make a difference, and they help protect our entire community from the worst impacts of the pandemic. With that, I'm going to conclude the presentation on COVID nineteen. We'll start an update on monkeypox. Dr. Singal, hopefully she's on. And she can run through these slides. I want to just double check on that.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. So, Dr. Singal, it's all yours.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, and thank you, Dr. Fair, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Today I will be providing a situational update on monkeypox in LA County, some background on the virus, our testing and vaccination efforts, and our communication plans with the public and providers. Okay, next slide. So as of July eleventh, there are over nine thousand four hundred worldwide confirmed cases of monkeypox across more than fifty-seven countries. This includes eight hundred and sixty-six confirmed cases in the United States from thirty-six states, and also includes one hundred and forty-eight cases in California. There have been three deaths reported internationally, but no deaths have occurred in the United States. To date, there have been sixty-six cases of monkeypox identified in Los Angeles County. All cases have been among adults, and there's been an overall median age of thirty-five years. The Los Angeles County Department of Public Health has confirmed local transmission of monkeypox, but just over fifty percent of cases identified to date in the county are associated with domestic or international travel. The identified cases have been found across the county. I want to emphasize that there have been no hospitalizations or deaths locally, and the risk of monkeypox in the general population remains very low. Next slide. A little background on monkeypox and signs and symptoms. So monkeypox is a disease that's caused by an infection with the monkeypox virus. It's typically found in Central and West Africa and does not occur naturally in the United States and other countries where current cases are being reported. Monkeypox is a viral infection that can spread through contact with body fluids, monkeypox sores, or shared items such as clothing and bedding that have been contaminated with fluids or sores of a person with monkeypox. Monkeypox virus can also spread between people through saliva or respiratory droplets, typically between people in a closed setting. Although monkeypox is not generally considered a sexually transmitted infection, it can be transmitted during sex through skin-to-skin and other intimate contact, regardless of gender or sexual orientation. People with monkeypox sometimes develop a flu-like illness with fever, fatigue, muscle aches, and enlarged lymph nodes, followed by a rash. The symptoms usually develop seven to fourteen days, but can be up to twenty-one days after being exposed. Most people with monkeypox have mild illness that improves without treatment over two to four weeks. Treatment is supportive and focused on easing the symptoms of the illness. Monkeypox is contagious and can spread to others until scabs have fallen off and a new layer of skin has formed. As a reminder, there are no specific approved treatments for monkeypox infections. However, medications such as antivirals may be used to ease the symptoms of illness. In some cases, vaccine can be given to prevent the disease after exposure to the monkeypox virus. Next slide. We encourage anyone who thinks that they may have monkeypox to contact their healthcare provider for evaluation. All healthcare providers in Los Angeles can test for monkeypox by collecting samples and sending them to either one of two commercial labs that are now accepting samples for monkeypox testing, LabCorp and the Mayo Clinic, or to the Department of Public Health's public health laboratory. To date, Public Health's laboratory has conducted testing for over one hundred and fifty suspect cases and will continue to provide testing as additional commercial labs are onboarded and testing capacity in the county increases. Patients without a healthcare provider or health insurance can call two-one-one for a referral, or they can visit a public health, sexual health clinic for evaluation and testing. Next slide. Next, I want to briefly cover what public health has done to date on the vaccination front. The supply of the genius vaccine from the federal government has been and continues to be extremely limited. Our initial allocation was only a thousand doses, which we quickly administered over the last several weeks to those who had high-risk exposures to monkeypox cases. Last week, we received an additional six thousand doses that are being allotted to those at highest risk of exposure. And we have made two additional groups eligible for vaccination, which I will discuss shortly. Of note, from this allocation, we have already distributed more than one thousand five hundred doses to our community providers, and will distribute the rest in the coming days. Additionally, we have requested our next allocation of nine thousand doses from CDC, and that should arrive later this week. As a reminder, Genius vaccine is a two-dose series with a second dose due four weeks after the first dose. Next slide. To review vaccine eligibility, public health initially focused vaccination efforts on select groups of persons identified through public health investigation. This included persons confirmed by public health to have a high or intermediate risk exposure with someone with monkeypox, as defined by the CDC. It also included persons who attended an event or venue where there was a high risk of exposure to an individual or individuals with confirmed monkeypox through skin-to-skin or sexual contact. Public health works with event and venue organizers to identify persons who may have been present and at risk of exposure, and extends the invitation for vaccination. With the arrival of the six thousand Genius doses last week, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health has expanded the eligibility criteria for residents to receive the monkeypox vaccine. So in alignment with the National Monkeypox Vaccine Strategy, vaccine is being allotted to residents at highest risk of exposure. So beginning yesterday, monkeypox vaccine has now been available by invitation only to two additional groups. The first are patients of community STD and HIV clinics, public health centers, and other community clinics located across Los Angeles County who meet the following criteria. They are gay and bisexual men and transgender women who are patients of an STD clinic with a diagnosis of rectal gonorrhea or early syphilis within the past three months. And second, we are offering vaccine to high-risk cohorts in the county jail system in collaboration with our LA County Corrections Health Services. It is important to know that public health or clinic partners will be directly communicating to eligible patients to provide details on how and where to access the Genius vaccine. Vaccine will be available at twenty-five sites across Los Angeles County with fourteen different provider agencies, as well as eight Department of Public Health Community STD clinics. Residents who have not been contacted by public health or clinic partners are not able to be vaccinated at this time. Next slide. In addition to the current expansion, we are already starting to map out the strategy for expanding vaccine eligibility to additional groups of individuals at high risk of getting infected that we will implement as soon as we receive additional doses. Although our plans are not finalized, we hope to offer vaccine to the following groups in the upcoming weeks. Patrons of commercial sex venues or bathhouses, gay bisexual men and transgender women eligible for HIV prep or pre-exposure prophylaxis, gay bisexual men and transgender women living with HIV with high-risk behaviors, and other vulnerable populations as informed by the epidemiology of our outbreak. Overall, the vaccine plan is striving for a thoughtful and equitable distribution among those at highest risk for monkeypox. Next slide. Little bit on our communication to the public and providers. So public health has done a lot of work to share information on monkeypox with community and healthcare providers and the general public. To date, we've held nearly ten telebriefing or coordination calls with community partners, including the HIV community, LGBTQ plus community, people experiencing homelessness, sex workers, elected officials, and service providers, and are disseminating a variety of assets and materials for these partners to share with their clients or the public, including printed postcards and pamphlets. Additionally, we're planning on using social media platforms like Instagram and TikTok for outreach by working with local LGBTQ plus social media influencers to serve as trusted messengers who can share information about monkeypox with their followers. I also want to promote that public health will be participating with a number of I also want to promote that Public Health will be participating with a number of community partners, including the Los Angeles Blade and LGBT Center for a virtual town hall event today at 6:00 PM. At the event, we will be presenting information about monkeypox and directly answering resident questions. And I want to encourage residents to sign up for the Public Health Monkeypox email newsletter, which will be delivered weekly to their inbox. Next slide. Finally, DPH is maintaining close communication with healthcare providers in Los Angeles County to ensure they have access to the latest clinical information on monkeypox. The DPH provider webpage provides a host of information and resources on how to contact and receive support from the Public Health Department. Public Health has also sent several alerts with a monkeypox situational update, information on how to test, report results, and obtain or administer the vaccine through our LA Han system, which reaches 23,000 healthcare providers. To improve the expanded vaccination effort, office hours for healthcare providers are starting that will provide training, support, and receive their ideas and feedback. So that concludes our presentation on monkeypox. Happy to answer any questions.
Let's go ahead. Thank you very much to both of you. Let's go ahead and hear from Dr. Galley and then we'll hear from Supervisor Han, who held a 10. So, Dr. Galley?
Yes, thank you. I'll keep my comments very brief today because I know there's a lot to cover, partly with monkeypox and also because we haven't had very many substantial changes since the time of the last report. So if you look at, if you look at the initial slide, next slide please, looks at the hospitalizations and as you can see, they've been relatively stable over the last week or so. We did have an initial increase in the hospitalizations, but that has then leveled out in the mid-80s over the past week and that's still where they are today. As of this morning in our four DHS hospitals, we had 81 patients with COVID who were admitted to our four hospitals. That is the patients with a positive COVID test. Still, the number who are actually there for COVID is still just a fraction of that and much lower. On the next slide, Slide 3, looks at the individuals who are being cared for within our quarantine and isolation sites. This is specific for individuals who are medically fragile and that resource remains available to the public for individuals who require that level. The intake process is managed in partnership with the Department of Public Health. The next slide, Slide 4, looks at community testing. Just as a reminder, the data that's here reflects just the testing that's performed by the DHS-managed, fulgent-operated testing sites and also by the state testing sites. It doesn't take into account any of the PCR tests that were performed at any of a number of other sites, whether it's other privately operated sites, retail pharmacies, hospitals, clinics, other vaccination, sorry, other testing sites. It also doesn't take into account the large number of home tests that are currently being performed with antigen testing. But within this specific subset, we did see an increase in volume of testing at these community testing sites where it increased by about 6% over the last week. The test positivity rate has also climbed. The last time I reported to you, I believe it was at 20 or 21% and this past period, it's been up to 25%. Again, as I've explained before, we do expect that the test positivity rate among these community testing sites is higher, will be higher understandably than it is for the county overall in the numbers that the Department of Public Health reports. Because of the different populations that use these sites, we locate our community testing sites in at-risk communities and also preferentially are really working to get people in for testing if they've had exposure to COVID or they have symptoms of COVID rather than just routine screening. We do still have testing that's available at all sites. Next slide. The next two slides just show an overview of the data so you can see a snapshot of where we've been and where we're at now. So if you look at the far right of this slide for the end of June and the beginning of July, you'll see what is the slight increase in the testing completed, which is those blue bars, but still much lower than it was earlier in the pandemic. And the next slide shows the at-home test collection program and the test pickup distribution sites. And there's a lot of tests that are not being utilized right now through those sites, not being either sent home or distributed. Those tests are reused, they don't expire, so it's not a concern of wasted tests. But right now, the utilization at those sites is very low. Still, we do believe that it represents a really important access point for the community and we don't have any intention to change the distribution of those sites at present. I will close there. I do just want to echo really Dr. Ferrer's comments about mask wearing. It still is the most important way, really, along with vaccination, that people can help prevent the spread of COVID, especially when we have high community transmission such as we do. So if people are out and about in large groups or in an indoor setting, I would strongly encourage people to wear a mask to help reduce the rate of transmission that is circling in Los Angeles County. Be happy to answer questions if there are any, but thank you.
Thanks to the three of you. Supervisor Han asked that we hold item 810, so we're going to go to Supervisor Han first, followed by Supervisor Barker.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Singal, for the presentation on monkeypox. And I know, Dr. Ferrer, you're still on. If you have, if, I'm not really sure who I'm asking my questions to, but between the two of you, maybe you can answer. And I appreciate this update because just this presentation, it looks like we're doing almost everything possible to combat monkeypox, but that was not the sense I was getting from the number of calls I was getting in my office. I can't speak for my colleagues, but I got a lot of calls thinking that we were a little slow on the uptake. We weren't doing everything we could. I know the LGBTQ community was really anxious and was wanting more urgent action. But I mean, looking at the presentation, it does look like we're doing a lot. I think one of the interesting things is the vaccines, right? So it does look like we don't have an enormous supply of vaccines and it seems like that's what we really should be working on. And I'm curious about this invitation-only model that we're doing for this vaccine. And how do you think that's working? Is there another way we could do it? Do you think that, because I mean, I'd obviously like to see our, each time we get an allotment, that we exhaust it before the next allotment comes? And do you think this invitation-only will achieve that goal?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. I'll start and then by all means, Dr. Singal, you know, can definitely provide additional sort of details because she's coordinating the work on the ground. But you raised some very good points, so thank you so much, Supervisor Han. And I know it was distressing even for us at the beginning. You know, we received 1,000 doses. I just want to be completely honest. We received 1,000 doses and we already had cases that had been identified that were associated with two very large events. So we knew that what we had to do was a twofold task. First, we have to get information out, both to providers and to residents about monkeypox because this is new for all of us in this country. I mean, the last time we had monkeypox was a few years ago and it was associated with prairie dogs. So nothing like what we're dealing with now. And that required, you know, just communications about basic information. Super important with providers because we needed them to diagnose, something that they, most of them had likely never, ever seen. So I want to just say there was a huge emphasis upfront on working with the very large provider community and getting general information out. And then because we had such limited doses, we were just doing, you know, case identification and contact tracing. I think Dr. Singal has worked not just with our team, but with the larger community to address that issue about how do we deal with the fact that we do have still very limited doses, particularly for the demand from people who would like now to get vaccinated. Most, many people now have never been vaccinated against smallpox. So rightfully, people are noting that this might be an appropriate time for some groups of people to want to get vaccinated. But we don't have enough vaccine to open it yet. I do think you're absolutely right that every time we get more doses, we need to quickly, we have a strategy that quickly gets them out so that we can go ahead and continually, like we did initially with COVID, expand the group of people who are eligible. And you see this next phase, we're anticipating another 9,000 doses. This next phase will be a much broader group of folks that would be eligible to sort of self-identify, like you said, not wait for the invitation, but self-identify it being at higher risk and be able to come in and get those vaccines. But I do want to note, even 9,000 doses, you can imagine that that's not going to go very far. And we do want to make sure that we avoid, one of the mistakes we made at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, which was that we think long and hard about a distribution strategy that doesn't allow some people more advantages than others because they have transportation resources or website resources. So we've got to address the equity issues like front and center in the distribution plan and working hard on that. But, but we, I appreciate and agree with you that it's been rough because we haven't had enough vaccine and people rightfully are understanding they may be at greater risk. But I want to also point out, when people are at greater risk, that's when you have to maybe change some of the behaviors. And here at the Department of Public Health, we also need to help with that messaging, that since everyone isn't going to get vaccinated, how do you protect yourself from getting or getting monkeypox or infecting others? And, you know, again, encouraging people to come in and get tested if they have any lesions or any signs or symptoms or have had any exposure.
So speaking of, speaking of the testing, it seemed like that was one of the other concerns was the turnaround for test results. I think there was one slide that we'd, I didn't, I'm not really sure, was it 150 tests that we have been able to conduct? Was that, was that the 150 slide number?
Yes, so just to clarify, so we have tested 150 suspect cases for monkeypox through our public health lab. We do now have specimens that may be going to the commercial labs, so those positive results will be reported to us.
So with our 150, what, how quick, what was the turnaround time?
So our turnaround time has stayed relatively even, consistent with what the other labs in, you know, at the state level as well as around the country are doing, which it is about a two-day turnaround. So if we get specimens on a certain date, it usually gets onto the machine the following day. It just depends on when they arrive at the lab. And we have been able to keep up. It may be that that will extend to three days, just given that the demand for testing is going up. We are hoping that providers will keep in mind that if they're able to send specimens to the commercial labs, they do have a lot of capacity right now since they're just starting off and that may be, you know, a way to help alleviate some of the demand that there will be on our public health.
Yeah, I feel like the more we're getting into this, the more, like for instance, we're having this item today on the Board of Supervisors. It sounds like you're doing a very aggressive social media, you know, campaign, so to speak. So it does feel like we're going to get hopefully more people who will want to access our testing. Do we, are you prepared to have, what's our capacity for testing? If, if, you know, this really does begin to, you know, increase and cause more people to want to get tested?
Yeah, I think there, I mean, I think we'd start by just saying, testing for testing's sake is never a great idea. So, so, you know, you test because you've had an exposure, you think you've had an exposure, or you have some symptoms. That's why we have to do a really good job so people know what the symptoms are. And, you know, I think for people, many people, they think of monkeypox as being, you know, you're covered with pox's, like some, almost similar to like chicken pox. But that's not actually the case with how monkeypox is presenting now. So we need to make sure people are clear that even if you just have one or two lesions, you need to go in and get examined so that those are the people that are getting tested. The commercial labs, I forget, Dr. Singal, but remind me. I think it's they have capacity to run 50,000 tests a day at LabCorp and a similar amount, I think, for Mayo Clinic. So there's capacity there as long as we can help providers understand that that is a legitimate place to go ahead and send their lab specimens to. If we had a lot more demand and everybody just continued to send it to us, you're right Supervisor, we would, we would be overwhelmed.
Yeah, okay. And then one last thing. It seems like, again, with the invitation-only model and really relying on folks having a relationship with, you know, a clinic, a sexual health clinic, there's got to be a population out there that, very much like we found in COVID, right? Not everybody has a doctor, not everybody has a pediatrician. What's our, what's our plan, what's your plan to reach those who aren't connected to, right now, to a provider?
Dr. Singal, do you want to, I mean, we're obviously trying to address that with the public health clinics as well because, you know, we are for everyone, so, but I know Dr. Singal and the team have thought a lot about this.
Yeah, no, we, we are definitely thinking about this right now and we hope to have just in the next few days, a referral system to allow those that may not be associated with the providers that we're working with and giving vaccine supply to. It may be providers that we're still onboarding, you know, and we don't want to be, we don't want there to be any delay for those that are eligible right now to get the vaccine, to be able to come in. And so we are in process of setting up a referral system and will take, you know, as many as we can into our public health clinics as well. So that is, you know, at the same time, it's a balance of getting other providers on as well as making sure that we have, keep our doors open to, for referrals for anyone who does not have access.
Okay, well, thank you. And if there's a role that we can play advocating for more vaccines to come our way, we're happy to do that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Barker?
Thank you, and I actually echo what Supervisor Han highlighted in terms of the perception because I think the comment that was made was that we're hearing a lot about COVID, but monkeypox, the county's not being proactive, but I'm hearing from Dr. Singal that in fact, we have been proactive. Is that a fair assessment?
I think so. I mean, I think we're doing the best again. The issue really is the limited supply of vaccine. So I think that's where, you know, we're constrained. I always welcome, you know, the ideas from the community about how to do a better job, making sure people have good information. I want to appreciate, we have a lot of partners working with us on this already and appreciate, you know, their sharing with us of strategies that they think will work for specific populations of concern.
Okay, because I was listening to the comment about not having enough vaccine and that we're going to have to educate and let people know about their behavior and everyone is not going to get vaccinated. Therefore, we have to really get out there and, and let the public know what they can do to avoid being exposed to monkeypox. I would argue the same thing applies to COVID as well in terms of what we've done with our education, getting people out there with the tools necessary to avoid coming in contact or contracting the virus. So I think that we have, we have a template in place and we can roll that out from a public health standpoint. But, so, I mean, I appreciate what we're doing on the monkeypox, but my question centers, I'm a little confused based on something the staff said, switching from monkeypox to the COVID, if I may. Are we doing them both at the same time, Madam Chair? Okay. Dr. Ferr, Dr. Galley, during the previous updates, you shared that about 60% of COVID hospitalizations are incidental COVID hospitalization numbers. And can you clarify if that is only for county hospitals? Because I'm hearing, Dr. Ferr, you say that it's only for county hospitals, but I was under the impression it was countywide. And, and if so, what is the current rate of incidental COVID hospitalizations today?
Yeah, that's a great question and I apologize if it was confusing. I report on countywide. Dr. Galley reports on the DHS Hospital Care System. Countywide incidental, and this is again, we have a, we have a one-week lag on this just because of how the data gets collected. You have to wait till people get discharged, so I want to explain that lag. But what we have right now is 58% of hospitalizations for COVID are incidental and the remainder, 42%, are for people who have a positive COVID test but also are there to get care for their COVID illness. So it's a little bit up, but I would say, you know, not much. It's really stayed pretty steady at a 60-40 split for about the last two months across the county.
Okay, thanks for that clarification because that, there was a little bit of a disconnect, but so I appreciate that clarification. And then, Dr. Ferr, I know that we're talking about countywide masking and I'm, and you showed a study that talked about the percentage, percentages based on where masks the percentage percentages based on where mask mandates are in place versus not. And I know that up north, Alameda County implemented a mask mandate while the surrounding counties did not. Have we looked at the stats as it relates to the impact it had?
We haven't. I mean, it, you know, the studies that that got done were kind of elegant studies trying to deal with issues of confounding. But we could go ahead and definitely talk to Alameda County. I think they had their masking mandate in place for four weeks. They took it away when their rates started going down. But, you know, I want to be careful about, you know, what's an association. So they had a masking mandate, then their rates went down. You could say that's great. They had a masking mandate, they, everybody did wear their masks. And then a few weeks later, their rates started going down. I think that's very simplistic and and what it will show is an association, but there's no causality there. It doesn't, we'd have to determine that it was really the mask wearing that led to those numbers going down and not something else. Like, the numbers were just going down everywhere. That's why I'm saying these studies are quite elegant. They take a lot of time. People invest a fair amount of money in them. But I'm happy to talk to Alameda County and just get back to you on their numbers.
Okay, because I know that my staff pulled the stats from the California Department of Public Health. On Alameda's county's seven day average, the case rate for the past two months to rates in neighboring Contra Costa, Santa Clara and San Francisco counties, and the case rate trends were nearly identical. I just want us to look at it because, you know, my concern is, and it's I've been consistent in terms of clarity and consistency. And the issue is no other county is going to impose that. And when you talk about monkeypox, you talk about how we have to educate about behavior and everyone is not going to get vaccinated, which we're finding you know, contrary to what I wish people would get vaccinated, they're not. And I think that education is important. And and then I'll just leave it with this. I mean, I would ask that if the recommendation is to mandate masking, that we would reach out to small business, our Small Business Commission, EDC, to get feedback from them. Because what I'm hearing is, and by the way, I appreciate you including in one of your slides that that businesses can mandate people to wear masks if they come in. I think that is important. And I think it's important for us to reiterate that to businesses that that they don't need our permission to mandate mask, that they can, in fact, you know, they have a right to refuse service to anyone if they don't want to wear a mask. And I think it's important for us to empower our small businesses. But I think it's also important for us to listen to our small businesses in terms of the impact or concerns that they may have as it relates to this, especially when surrounding counties are not going to be implementing it. And then my last question is, do we know if the state's considering doing anything like that? As it based on the numbers?
So let me, I'll just go to small businesses. Thanks so much for that suggestion. I'm happy to reach out to the Small Business Commission and EDC. We have, you know, we do continue, and I know your staff attend many of these, have our tele briefings with the specific sectors. But I love these recommendations. And I know we also got a recommendation to reach out to some other groups yesterday from the chiefs that we're following up on as well. Because we appreciate that advice and and again, have always benefited from reaching out, listening to people before things go in effect so we can understand what the concerns are going to be. We've also heard, as you know, as well, from some of our union partners and some of our worker councils that, you know, are urging us to move much more quickly. I mean, they also have concerns because I think like we all have just recently experienced, you know, as, as, you know, the county is an employer as well. There are tons and tons of people infected right now, and it disrupts our work as well. So I and it creates a fair amount of fear. I mean, I can just talk to what happens at this department. As, you know, with this many cases, there's, there's more fear. You know, people are scared, they're scared of getting infected. So so we'll go ahead and I'll send you that list of when those meetings are supervisor. Would welcome your staff joining us for that as well. And in terms of what the state is doing, we haven't heard that the state is moving, is going to move as as a state on this. You know, different, obviously, different counties have asked for different things. Many counties, particularly the northern counties, would like the state not to to move at all at this point and just let this be a county by county decision. I have a feeling that that's where it may stay. But we do regularly check in on Wednesdays with the state to find out whether or not they're anticipating taking any actions. And as soon as I hear otherwise, I'll let all of you know.
Thank you. Okay. And in closing, thank you, Dr. Ferrer. Thank you, Dr. Galley, and thank you, Dr. Sing Hall, for your work. We appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Supervisor Solis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, all three of you for your presentation. Very, very informative. And I don't have a lot of questions. I think the questioning around monkeypox, I'll ask a little bit about that. But I wanted to just go to start with you, Dr. Ferrer, on on one of your charts that you had COVID-associated deaths compared to deaths from select other causes. I really believe it's important for us right now to, you know, capitalize on this information and to really put it out there in all languages, particularly Spanish and the other immigrant languages that are pervasive. Because I think that is going to get the parents, responsible people, to go out and get tested or to get their boosters. And if we can align that in some manner, I think that would be great. But I really like the fact that the sheet really, the data doesn't lie as as we are told in in school. Data doesn't lie. And just to see the enormous numbers of people that have already contacted or have died, passed on, over 4,390 people just this year alone through July 11th is alarming and should be alarming. So I just want to ask you if you could please do that and and make that available.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thanks so much for that suggestion. And and we'll also work with your team on figuring out the best way to message with that information.
Right. And then, you know, on the indoor masking safety measures, we've been getting inundated by a lot of businesses as well that are concerned. Some are theme parks, some are planning their outdoor events. We have a big Major League Baseball game coming up, the Nationals, the Dodgers. So what are your, what are your recommendations there for people outdoors? Because that, again, is in, people are sitting in close proximity. You just go over that, please.
Sure, thank you. So the the universal masking safety measure would only apply indoors. It would apply at those large outdoor events if, for example, they had an indoor retail shop. But it wouldn't apply in other areas. Again, our recommendation is for particularly for people who are more vulnerable, older people, they have underlying health conditions, even if they're in outdoor spaces where they're very crowded, sitting next to people they don't know. It's always a good idea to go ahead and put that mask on and make sure it's a well fitting, high filtration mask. But in terms of the venues, so for that All-Star Game, no, there's no requirement at all for masking for the All-Star Game. We haven't entered into high yet. And we have to stay in high for two consecutive weeks. The earliest would be the end, let's say we enter in on Thursday. The earliest we're looking at having a universal indoor masking requirement would be at the end of this month. But we are working, I just held a meeting, I don't know, what's today, yesterday, with large event venues. So we do constantly talk, get feedback so that they understand what the implications are and where this matters. I mean, we are encouraging them, as always, to make sure that their employees, all of their employees are provided with respirator masks because that's where the risk is the greatest. You know, the person who's working the concession stand, the person who's cleaning. I mean, those are the folks who have many, many dozens and dozens of exposures every single day that they work with the general public that's not wearing a mask. So, you know, trying again to do some real protection for workers is one of our primary goals at this point, given what we're all seeing with outbreaks in workplaces. But there are no requirements for those outdoor venues or those large outdoor events. We just urge that people with underlying health conditions, people who are older, they appreciate the fact that they're at higher risk in those very close quarters. You know, whether you're inside or outside, if someone coughs in your face, you have an exposure if that person is infected. So people should just be careful. But there's no requirement, and outdoors is way safer than indoors.
So one, just one related question to that. I know in last year, last two years, we talked a lot about the card rooms and all that. And many of them had their facilities placed outside. I don't know that that is the same now since we kind of relax things. So what is your message to those individuals?
Yeah, thanks so much for asking Supervisor Solis. We'll be meeting with the card rooms. I mean, again, that whatever operations they have that are indoors, people will need to wear their face coverings unless they're actively eating or drinking. I mean, that's the rule everywhere indoors. So it'll be the rule indoors at the card rooms as well.
All right, great. Thank you. I wanted to ask Dr. Singal. Thank you very much for your presentation. And I think this is very timely. I think the last time we had a board meeting, I raised the issue about monkeypox because I was pretty alarmed to see what was happening and how quickly this could spread. And while it isn't as bad as we think, perhaps more information about prevention is the way to go, as my colleagues are saying, that it's really about getting people informed about what behaviors or what what types of things they should be looking for. And I'm particularly concerned about our youth, especially with LGBTQ plus foster youth and our individual young people that may have, you know, been in been in settings, congregate settings and what have you. How are we going to be messaging out to those younger populations as well in terms of risk of behavior, but also prevention and knowing what to look for and how to how to get information and assistance? Dr. Singal?
Okay. Sure. So as, as you noted, all of our cases currently are in adults. But we do want to make sure that we're being proactive and making sure that we're reaching all populations. And so we we can definitely reach out to organizations that work with the youth and specifically work with our probation department and our DCFS department as well to make sure that we're getting that messaging out to those that are at risk. The messaging is going to be very similar to what we're saying to adults. But I think in the congregate setting, it's a little bit different. And so, you know, so far, we don't have any cases that have shown up in congregate settings. And so we do want to be proactive and make sure that we're getting out and and working with those folks now. And so we will reach out.
Right. And and have we had any instances in our in our jails? And I understand that that's a high population that we are, could be high risk.
I can confirm that we don't have any cases in jails, P E H or other congregate settings at this time.
And so we are doing some education there in different languages as well?
Absolutely. So all of our materials are being translated into all the threshold languages. And we are working actively with our P E H providers and stakeholders as well as with the correction system. And, you know, but a variety of other stakeholders. And we're making sure that all those assets get out to them so that they can then use that to provide education to their groups.
Right. Supervisor, on that question with the jail, we've, just so you're aware, we've, we started today doing vaccinations in Men Central Jail. And we'll plan to continue those and are working closely with Dr. Singal and her team on that.
Great, good. I look forward to seeing how that how that goes and what the numbers are. The other question I had for you, Dr. Singal, is there's one of the slides that you presented that said the next group's planned for vaccination. And it has a variety. It has at least four bullets there. And and you talk about also gay, bisexual, transgender women eligible for HIV prep. So obviously, that's, you know, these are all unique populations, but they're very large in number as well as women living with HIV, high-risk behaviors, as well as vulnerable populations informed by local epidemiology of cases. So that one sounds a little vague to me. Can you just go into more detail about the last bullet?
Sure, absolutely. I think that's where we're looking at. If we were to start seeing cases in certain settings, then that then that is a population that we want to pursue. So, for example, you know, our correction system is definitely one of them. We are starting proactively there, but there may be additional. If we have any cases there, we may want to be more, you know, more targeted and provide more vaccine there. It may be in our P E H settings, you know, with specific shelters or specific locations there as well. So I think we're just following the trying to see what we can identify from the cases that we currently have to see which communities are being affected. And then we can target vaccine to those communities.
Right. And I just want to raise this because now I represent the entire Skid Row area. And I'm really interested in seeing what what is what we can do there to reach out in terms of prevention and information as we have teams that go out there regularly on different occasions for different things, that that somehow be coordinated with our with our our other folks that are helping us on the ground, LASSA, mental health, all of all the other teams that we're able to share this information with individuals that we come across because they're highly, as I say, many are unprotected and not aware, perhaps even of what is available to them or what they need to be aware of.
We're actively working with those groups right now. And we'll continue to make sure that we're getting any feedback from them as to how best to reach out. But we are actually engaged with the P E H stakeholders right now.
And then just lastly, just kind of a, you know, question really more for thought. While we're going to be getting 9,000 vaccinations, what does, what is a realistic number for LA County to receive going forward, given these populations that we're trying to target? That you outline in your chart here? What what numbers are we really necess that we really need to be focused on to move towards?
So, yes, so that's definitely a difficult question right now. I mean, the amount of vaccine that we're getting right now, the percentage that we're getting of the total allocation that CDC has, that number is actually smaller than what we have, you know, expected. So initially, you know, the they had 56,000 doses. We got about 6,000 of them. With this later, latest allocation, it was closer to about 140,000 doses total, and we got 9,000. And so it's a much smaller number than what we had expected. And the way that CDC is distributing the doses is based on the number of monkeypox cases in different jurisdictions as well as the the number of people that are at risk for monkeypox. And so, you know, for us, we, you know, as as monkeypox spreads across, you know, the the country with more states now having cases, the amount of vaccine that CDC is going to have will have to be spread across more jurisdictions. And so, you know, the amount of vaccine that we're expecting to get is not going to be much more than what we're getting right now in that there's another allocation possibly coming at the end of the month. We have not received confirmation. So this is not, you know, we have not been notified that we're going to be getting a weekly allocation. So right now, it's just a matter of when they get enough vaccine from the manufacturer, it gets delivered, they will then allocate that out. And so there may be another allocation that's going to come at the end of the month and then maybe another one late summer. And so, you know, we have not received any details about what those allocations are going to look like. We do not expect them to be much more than what we have gotten now. And so, yes, it's going to, the message continues that we have very limited supplies. We are going to be doing very targeted vaccination approach. Make sure that this is an equitable distribution. And and so with the groups that we've, you know, said that we're planning around, you know, obviously, we're not going to be able to provide vaccine to all of those groups because you're right, you know, the population there is high and we're not going to be able to meet it with just 9,000 doses or even if we get another 10,000 or 12,000 doses. And so we are going to be thinking through how best that we can get at those that are at highest risk, even within those communities. I mean, part of this is also assessing demand. And so once we make the vaccine available, we'll know more just this week. Once we go out with the, you know, our current phase to see how many folks are are who are eligible are, you know, coming in to get vaccinated. And then we'll apply that to, you know, to what our plan will be for the next allocation.
Well, I'm certain that we'll be ready to send forward a five signature letter, if possible, to the administration or CDC to try to meet this before we hit a crisis level. Because it seems to me that we're going under somewhat the same rubric that we went through with COVID. And it's unfortunate because we know what we're what we're facing. We have one of the highest at-risk populations probably in the country. We are, you know, one of the largest sectors here on the West Coast. So I would think that we could leverage that. So look forward to working with you and perhaps that'll be one motion that we'll bring forward next time. Five signature letter. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. And thank you, Dr. Galley, yesterday for helping us out and honoring those women that were enduring forced sterilization at L A C USC and helping to commemorate that awful epic moment in our history at L A C USC. Thank you and the staff for that.
Thank you. It was a beautiful event and the artwork was tremendous.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick follow up question, Dr. Singal. Who manufactures the monkeypox vaccine?
That is a good question. It is a European country, is my understanding right now. That's that is giving us the vaccine, but we can get more information on that.
It's a Danish company.
Danish.
Supervisor Han.
Danish company that's having some issues, so just.
Oh, okay. All right.
And it's one it's one company right now. I mean, it's a very similar, you know, issue as what we've been facing before, which is, you know, again, I mean, people are going to scramble to get more vaccine produced, but it's a limited supply because it's one company and it's a Danish company.
But that is curious, as monkeypox is not new. Supervisor Kuehl?
Yes. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to go back to Dr. Ferrer's original presentation and then come back again, if I may, to monkeypox. There's a lot of anecdotal evidence that I often rely on. And in the past couple of weeks, it's been virtually everyone I know, friends and family, many of them with quite young children. Children went to day camp or sleepaway camp, came home and infected the whole family and now they've all got COVID. They generally all engaged in at-home tests and discovered, you know, that they were positive and then did the right thing. Everybody, you know, sequestered till they tested negative and beyond. But that just means that none of those tests were reported to the county. So it's very likely that the number of positive tests in LA County is way higher than the numbers that we show, as you've said every other week to us, but just to emphasize that. But also I was struck by how many more reports there were of young children testing positive. And I don't know if the children's hospitals or any pediatricians have reported any elevated cases in younger kids over the past three or four weeks.
Yeah, thanks so much Supervisor and it's a really important point. You know, I'll start with just, you know, please vaccinate, you know, the younger children because that will help prevent them from showing up at children's hospital. And almost everybody who's been infected with COVID and then gone on as a child to develop M I F C has been unvaccinated. I think 70% of those cases are among people who are unvaccinated. So, you know, I'd start with, we need to do a really good job making sure people understand that vaccines protect children and that children, in fact, both get infected and get sick. We're tracking closely Supervisor, you know, sort of what's going on with hospitalizations by age group and right now don't see an increase, but obviously it's relatively early in what I call the summer season for camp. I do 100% agree with you. There's lots and lots of people infected, lots of children, including my own grandchildren who infected everyone, came home from camp and were positive. So, you know, I'm very sympathetic to the amount of transmission that's happening and how easy it is at this point for people, even people who are fully vaxxed and boosted to get infected with the variants that are currently circulating. I do think it's important to note, we do say all the time that our daily counts are now very, very much underestimating the burden of cases, which is why we triangulate the data with the sewer, with the wastewater sheds and the concentration of wastewater and with what's going on in emergency departments, which happens quicker than what we see in hospitals. So we can get a good understanding of the impact. I heard this morning that I think it's CDC was estimating that the numbers may underrepresent by sevenfold the real count of people who are infected at this point because the majority of people are in fact using over-the-counter tests that aren't being reported. And, you know, again, I think your point is well taken. There's lots and lots of people who are getting infected and there are lots and lots of people who are capable of infecting others. The numbers are much higher than what we're showing. We've always said it's like at least threefold a difference, but it is a time for people to understand that there's a lot of transmission.
Well, I think it's also important because of the increasing reportage of long COVID. Saw an interesting report on a study on the sort of the physical evidence that appears that's different, that's atypical in people with long COVID about some unusual molecules or part of the lung that keeps the air from transferring into the bloodstream. But I think it's sort of early research and just about, you've got it, you know, what causes it and that doesn't mean we can do anything about it. Do you know, I thought you said we didn't get a report about the sewers, maybe just this week?
This week, but you know, my hope is by the end of this week, they're back, the state is back online and we'll get another report. So, you know, we're hoping by next week we have that.
You know, I.
That that number hasn't really changed dramatically one week to another. So I think missing a week is is not going to be a disaster for us.
You know, secondly, I agree with my colleagues that in terms of reporting the causes of death and comparing it to other causes, looking at your, the chart that you presented, I would have said that the number of deaths from COVID in this county in the first six months of this year alone exceeded the total deaths on average over an entire year from a combination of deaths from overdose, auto accidents, influenza, you know, all the things you listed. Because when you added all those numbers up for the whole year on average, it was less than the total in our first six months. So simply in presenting it, I think I would say that it's outstripped, you know, the combined number of deaths from these major sources. The third thing is about masking. My colleagues know and certainly all my friends, I have no patience for people that don't wear masks. I mean, I have represented the beach communities for 30 years. There are signs out there that say, no shoes, no shirt, no service. And it's kind of like, I'm protesting, you're making me wear a shirt. No. And you know, I mean, to wear a mask and frankly, the issue, the hard thing is, I think, that part of wearing a mask is to protect other people.
Yes.
And I'm, I always have worried about, you know, servers, for instance, in restaurants. Because when we made it a strong recommendation, virtually nobody did it. I haven't seen masks anywhere. I don't see them in the grocery stores. I don't see them in the drugstores. People are just not wearing them when they're not mandated. So I for one, hope that we will make a very strong effort to have a mask mandate if we cross over into the high transmission areas because otherwise people aren't going to do it. And frankly, I think that's the same with monkeypox, where people need to understand they have a responsibility for keeping this from spreading. They're not the only ones. And that's why we're saying we're targeting with the few vaccination, you know, vaccine doses we have, specific people who are highest at risk, but we're hoping the rest of you won't get it. And, you know, people are, to switch over into the monkeypox presentation, sort of unaware about the reasons for the lack of vaccine because the there there are stockpiles of various kinds of vaccines, if I'm not mistaken, in the U.S. National Strategic Stockpile. And monkeypox is not lethal, it wasn't seen here. So apparently, all the vaccines were allowed to expire without being replaced, pretty much like we saw with ventilators in the spring of 2020, where people didn't know we were going to need them, so they were all gone. So that's why I think we have such a limited supply, in addition to the fact that there's one manufacturer and we're not certain what's wrong going on there. Maybe it's on a boat somewhere off of Long Beach, you know, waiting to get in. The other thing is, in my community, there there were large pride events and some of the spread of monkeypox has been traced to those large events. This is not the first time we've been through this. And I would say to my community, okay, you can call for vaccination, but take some responsibility. We're used to doing this. And I'm grateful for the messages that have been getting out for the town hall with the LGBTQ Center and, you know, the work you're doing to educate medical providers of different kinds. But I, I guess I want to ask what you think, Dr. Singal and Dr. Ferrer, that we might do in addition, you know, through our offices? Because like everybody, you know, I'm getting lots of calls saying, where's the vaccine? Where's the vaccine? So what can we tell people who are not eligible for the vaccine but think they've been exposed? As I understand what you said, if they think they've been exposed, they are eligible for the vaccine? Or do they have to show that they were at some place where they were likely exposed?
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, I think I think we are certainly very willing for all the offices, you know, to give you both talking points specific to answering the most common questions. So and then also give you some of the materials we're using. And I think you're you're right. I mean, this is, we faced this during COVID as well, when vaccine was in scarce supply, then people had to do something else. Like, nobody was hopeless or helpless. There were always some strategies that people could use in the absence of vaccines. And I think we probably Supervisor Kuehl need to do a better job on that messaging so that people are clear, we're not going to have, at least for the summer, enough vaccine for everybody who wants it. And here, strategies for staying safe until there's more vaccine.
Yeah, I think that it would be good for us to have talking points for our staff about how one can attempt to protect oneself. Is there a hotline in public health about it? Because people, I mean, it's always difficult to get a number up, but we could say when we get calls, you know, if you want a full explanation, here's the hotline if you think you've been exposed, et cetera. And also how people can set up their contact information so they can be informed if the vaccine eligibility is expanded. You know, just trying to, that we all have sort of the same information to give out.
Yeah, so just a couple of things sort of on, you know, you know, how people can stay informed. We do have this weekly newsletter. We ask people to sign up for the weekly newsletter so that we in fact can give them timely information as we expand eligibility. And we'd love for you to help us promote that. I mean, that's one of the most direct ways we have of reaching people who could be reached that way. So I want to acknowledge, not everybody can be reached that way. It's not going to work for everybody. But for some people, that's a good strategy. We have a contract with 211 for them to answer the basic questions around monkeypox and then do referrals into us for those people who, just like you noted Supervisor, may be really a close contact or a potential case that needs some follow-up. But we have used our contract with 211 for the basic calls and to get basic information of monkeypox. We'd be anxious to hear back from you if you're hearing from constituents that that's not working. I mean, we obviously have had experiences in the past where that doesn't work and have had to set up a completely separate way for people to get information. But right now, we are using 211 and they have scripts that we constantly modify on how to answer calls and appropriately refer to us, those folks who need that kind of follow-up. Dr. Singal, I don't know if there's other information that you want to share on the sort of a close contacts?
Sure, that's exactly right. I wanted to just clarify regarding, you know, those that may have been exposed. So right now, you know, one of the main tasks that the Public Health Department has is that we're doing very careful interviewing of cases and we follow each case closely throughout until they're completed with their isolation period. During that case interview, we are identifying, you know, where they've been, where there might have been contact with others, and then specific folks that may that they may have been in contact with. We understand that they may have been at events where they won't know the names of everyone that they were in contact with. And so that is when we are then working actively with those event or venue organizers to see if we can, you know, send out messaging and invite people who may have been at that venue at that time to come in for vaccine. So there has been, we have, you know, heard that there's some, you know, folks that are saying that they have been exposed and where can they come in and get vaccine? So really, this is something that is being generated from the Public Health Department and we are reaching out when we have evidence that there's been exposure or risk at any sort of setting or for individuals that that cases can specifically name as close contacts. For a few of the folks that have, you know, kind of come into us and have said that they've exposed, it's very hard to verify the information, you know, if they have had a true exposure or not. So that has been more difficult for us to, you know, actually offer the vaccine in that way. So what I would just say, the messaging right now is that we, the Public Health Department, will be reaching out if there has been any exposure, if there has been any close contact and, you know, we will let them know where they can come in to get the vaccine.
I think it would be very helpful, just in closing, if you might give us, Dr. Ferrer, something to put in our newsletters. Because I think all of us do that every week. You know, we have little blogs and maybe you've already done it. I'm the last one to know until I say, okay, send this out. But it would be helpful and and the most up to date. I mean, mine is always finished off on Friday, goes out on Saturday, but I, people may have different timing. So anything that will help us, you know, just get it out to our constituents where they're not on your list, I think would would also be helpful. And Dr. Galley, I do want to thank you always, even when I don't have a question to you, for your work as well. Dr. Singal, very nice to see you and thank you for stepping up, you know, into this particular maelstrom. And Dr. Ferrer, thank you as always. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you for all the support.
Thank you all. Just a quick question. You mentioned Dr. Galley about Men's Central Jail and other group living facilities. I'm blanking on the word right now, but group living facilities.
Congregate.
Congregate, thank you Supervisor Solis, congregate. How will you prioritize who gets the vaccine in those settings? Is it self, will they self-identify or will there be a process by which you prioritize within congregate settings, who gets the vaccine?
Supervisor, is the question specific to correctional facilities or congregate facilities?
Yes. Well, you mentioned, I think Supervisor Solis mentioned, and you mentioned Men's Central Jail, that the vaccine was would roll out, so specifically Men's Central Jail.
Sure, sure. Thank you. It's a good question. We have a, we're working with the Department of Public Health to identify the individuals who are at highest risk. That includes consideration of DPH's criteria, which Dr. Singal went through, which includes men who have sex with men, individuals who identify as gay, particularly if they have a recent sexually transmitted infection, especially gonorrhea or some others within the recent past. There's several criteria that would identify an individual as high risk. And right now, within the jails, we've identified approximately 250 individuals who would be the first set of individuals that we are seeking to offer the vaccine to. Obviously, the vaccine is still a matter of individual choice for the patient. And and we've started those conversations and the efforts at vaccination today. And then once additional vaccine is is made available, we'll continue to identify populations that are at risk. And the risks are always gradations of risk to be able to further roll out the vaccine over time.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Hearing no other comments on the report on Set Matter Two. Set Matter Two, it's received and filed and hearing no objections, such will be the order. Item A10 is also received and filed, hearing no objections, such will be the order. Thanks to the three of you always for your commitment, the commitment of your teams and for answering all of our questions today. We appreciate you. We'll see you again. Colleagues, we'll now move on to item 11. Abortion is legal, countywide communication strategy, which was held by Supervisor Solis. Supervisor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for also joining me as my co-author on this very important and timely motion. As you know, this board has been strong in standing up for our residents' right to an abortion. And we have, in my opinion, the responsibility to guard this right to be to the greatest extent. And although abortion is not on the chopping block here in LA County, the Supreme Court's decision in Dobbs puts our residents in a dangerous place. The decision emboldens, in my opinion, crisis pregnancy centers to set up shop. And what that means that in fact, in the San Francisco Chronicle, which ran a story recently showing that California has a quarter of the United States abortion clinics, but they are also still outnumbered by crisis pregnancy centers in California. And the reality is that there are many of these right here in LA County and more will likely be stood up as a result of this decision. These centers, as you know, sometimes operating under the guise of offering comprehensive reproductive health services, in many cases fall short. Many patients who show up thinking they're getting abortion services instead are faced with efforts to persuade them against having an abortion or pursuing other options. And on top of that, the Dobbs decision creates And on top of that, the Dobbs decision creates significant confusion among our residents about what rights, including the right to an abortion, remain for them. This is especially true for young people, foster youth, undocumented residents, and those enrolled in My Health LA and other vulnerable populations, particularly from communities of color. And that's why we're bringing this motion forward today for your consideration. We have to make sure that our residents know the following: abortion remains legal, abortion remains safe, and abortion remains confidential. And to that end, we need to implement an immediate communication strategy, activating our ethnic and hyper-local media to ensure that our residents know immediately where they can continue receiving abortion and reproductive health care. This must be done, in my opinion, in coordination with the Office of Immigrant Affairs, our health departments and other relevant departments, and importantly, our community stakeholders. But I want to go a step further and underline that it isn't just to provide translation services, that this really means to put this in the budgets of these departments so they can actively work with these hyper-local media who have more access and are more effective in reaching the Latinx as well as the African-American community and AAPI community. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you for co-authoring, and I ask my colleagues to please join me in support of this motion. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Solis, and I really appreciate you for allowing me to co-sponsor this motion with you. I'm really struck every day by how much confusion the court action has caused, the number of people who assumed that their right to access it ended immediately, regardless of what state they're in. So I completely agree with you that we have to be clear consistently and to all communities what remains available here in LA County. I heard you loud and clear talk about the need for resources, so I'm just going to take a quick second to really talk about what's been made available. I'm really pleased that based on a motion we carried here at the county level to make sure that we create a pilot to help out-of-state women who are going to come here because of their bans in their home states, that the governor and legislature funded LA County's pilot to the tune of $20 million. That was important as we made that motion to make sure that resources were made available to help us make that a reality. Additional resources, $20 million, one time over six years, for grants to reproductive health care facilities for securing physical and digital infrastructure. $40 million for grants to reproductive health care providers to offset the cost of providing care to low and moderate income individuals. A $13 million California Reproductive Justice and Freedom Fund for grants to community-based reproductive health rights and justice organizations. Up to $15 million annually for non-federally qualified health centers to assist with abortion services provided to Medicare beneficiaries. An additional fund to the tune of $20 million, which will provide grants for nonprofit organizations and health care providers to assist patients. So an additional reproductive health services core grant to recruit, retrain, excuse me, to recruit, retain, and train clinicians. So I think all of those resources are critically important to make sure that we are able to truly operationalize our vision, to make sure that everyone knows that LA County is a sanctuary county, as is our state. Again, it's important, as you said, Supervisor Solis, to make sure that there is a media campaign in the languages needed, the threshold languages needed here in LA County, targeting those communities who are often at the back of the line in terms of understanding what resources are available to them. So I thank you very much for your motion and will wholeheartedly be supporting it. Let's go ahead and hear from Supervisor Han, followed by Supervisor Kuhl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, since we got wind of the leaked draft Supreme Court ruling, this board has been doing everything possible to support access to abortion and reproductive care, making sure that our county residents know their rights is imperative, because as Supervisor Solis said, there will be a lot of scare tactics and false information put out there. It's good that this motion addresses the importance of coordinated countywide communication strategy. Thank you to Supervisor Solis and Mitchell for bringing this forward. I wanted to do an amendment on our campaign, on our communication strategy to include out-of-state patients, but I understand that because of the motion that I believe Supervisor Mitchell and Kuhl brought forth in January, it already addresses the need to have a strategy for the out-of-staters. Our county departments are already actively working on opportunities to scale up and meet the demand for individuals who will be traveling from their states, which have now made abortion illegal. So the existing effort includes identifying communication strategies for out-of-state patients. So I didn't realize that, and I'm, I think that's important because I do think our communication strategy needs to include our out-of-state women as well. It will be important that they know that they're welcome here and whether or not we have the capacity to meet that demand. So thank you for this motion. It has my full support.
Supervisor Kuhl?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Has my full support as well. And I like that the motion targets specific populations that would be least likely to have access to our general communication. But I do have a question about that general communication, because I think it's a message that needs to be sort of greatly widely known, that abortion is not illegal in any way in this state and in this county. So I wanted to ask our CEO in terms of our own communications area, whether we have included this more general message. This motion is necessary because we rarely target these populations, though we have, I think, been doing better with the ethnic press in having, you know, briefings. But do we have a general message that we have sent out, do send out, tend to repeat on this matter? Madam CEO?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Kuhl. We have sent out some messaging related to the Dobbs decision. And I will have to check with our countywide communication folks. I do not believe at this time we have something that's going out on a consistent basis about services being available, whether it's for locally or for folks that are, who are outside the state of California.
Well, I think it may be important, just, you know, I'm not saying how to do it, but that we repeat the general message in our, in messaging through the CEO's office and that we continue to repeat it so that everybody, everywhere knows that we are not a state that has banned these procedures, period. It's not saying like, here's where you go, or here's Atlantic, even that kind of thing, though there may be, you know, something else that we could say. And in addition, the, this motion is very much needed, I think, to target the populations, the ethnic press, so that we make certain that people who generally don't get the general message.